Where are they?
Calling Mr. Swett to return to your posts.
Court!
You think Rachel's home watching us on TV throwing stuff at the TV?
You're already on the air.
And Rachel heard that.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to our May eleventh School Committee meeting. Congratulations to all the recipients on a wonderful job. Anywhere from twenty to thirty-plus years of service. And the principals of all the schools really made it known how important those people are, and we all appreciate them. Next on the agenda, public participation. Anyone to address the committee? Seeing no one out there, we'll go right to good news, Dr. Robinevich.
Thank you. This past week, about a week ago, I accompanied Principal Palladino to the Academic All-Star Program from our south coast. It was on April twenty-seventh, and the following Wareham High School students were recognized as Academic All-Stars for two thousand and eleven. Sean Kinsky, Marley Harunk, Leann McDonald, George Andrews, and Mary Grace Brigholi. These were definitely Academic All-Stars. They have great grades, and they are all-around great students and citizens at the high school. Three students from the Deaconess Elementary School were winners in the, and please hold your laughter, the Cuckoo Gets a Life Essay Contest, sponsored by the Wareham Boys and Girls Club. First place was Cecilia Batino. Second place was Aaron Allen Murdock. And third place to Roberto Sandoval and Caitlin Kelly. Congratulations to the students that participated in that contest. And the following applications were approved by the Make Peace Neighborhood Fund. Another piece of good news, this group of us from the school committee attended an award ceremony for Make Peace because of the grants that they have given out over the last five years, or six years, to the teachers of the Wareham Public Schools and the Cover Public Schools. And as an example, this Thursday at the Hornet Village at four o'clock, the Make Peace Neighborhood Fund will be giving out awards. An AED Automated External Defibrillator to the Wareham Public Schools, costs two thousand forty-four dollars. To the Wareham Public Schools, a Grade Three Team Elmo Projector System, I believe that's at Minnet, for nine thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. A Life Skills, a program to help promote at Wareham High School, for seven thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. And more Mini-Max, more opportunities, I believe that is also at the high school, for four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. And from the math department at Wareham High School, STEM Education Robotics Initiative, four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And that is in addition to the twenty thousand dollar check that we get each spring to help pay for half a position at the Wareham Cooperative School. So, well over approximately forty thousand dollars worth of gifts for the Make Peace Fund, and we really appreciate their partnership and the fact that they give back to this town. That is the items under good news that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Rhonda? Good news?
I do. First, I just want to wish Mr. and Mrs. Heath, who attend our school committee meetings every single week and provide valuable feedback, tonight is their anniversary, so I'd like to wish them happy anniversary, and they made the they made the correct choice of not attending tonight and instead enjoying their anniversary at a restaurant.
Great.
The second thing that I just wanted to mention is that last Friday, I attended the Wareham Educational Association reception for our retiring teachers. It was a great event, and really honoring the two hundred and twenty-two years of service that the retiring teachers gave to Wareham, that is only in Wareham, two hundred and twenty-two years in Wareham. So I just want to recognize Nancy Berry, Catherine Jackie, Carol Richardson, Judy Trebek, who is here tonight, Lance Hatlet, Elizabeth Lufkin, Michelle Robillard, and Lindsay, I'm sorry, Linda McKenzie, for their two hundred and twenty-two years of service, and just thank them very much. That's what I had, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Dr. Sylvia?
Well, I don't have any good news, but I think it's probably relevant. Well, we just paid tribute to some folks that have been around for a long time, and quality educators, but more importantly, quality staff people in support and of education, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and custodians. And I'd like to just mention one thing very briefly, is that I remember John Duffy when he was a student at Wareham High School, and I think he went to work for the high school as a custodian right after he graduated. But if you take a look at that building, and all, this is all the custodians, not just at the high school, and you take a look at our buildings, and you see that they're really, really good shape for the years of service and the hard use that they get. And I think that's a tribute to the custodial staff, but all the support people, our cafeteria people, our monitors, our, you know, it's just incredible. But just one particular story, real briefly, I gave my wife a pair of diamond studs for one Christmas, and she warmed to school, and she was real proud of them, and she showed them off. And she got home, and she realized that one of the studs were gone. And so she went back to her room, and she tried to find them and so forth, and at the time, it was John Duffy and Mr. McNeil, Gary McNeil, and they says, oh, don't worry, you know, if it's here, we'll find it. Well, they stayed on their own time, and they went through every dumpster, they went through every wastebasket, they went through every dust compartment of the vacuum cleaners, and that's where they found it, in the dust compartment of one of the vacuum cleaners. So that's the kind of people that we have, and the dedication that they have, not only for the kids, but for the staff. So I just thought it would be an appropriate time to just mention how much we really do. And I think I speak for the whole committee, how much we really do appreciate those folks and the work that they do for us. Thank you.
One question, did you go to Jared's? Jeff?
I guess this would fall into the category of good news. Our superintendent and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Barry and Jen, and I went to a seminar yesterday in Boston. It was entitled "Reimagining Teacher Evaluations," I believe that was the title. It was put on by a not-for-profit organization and attended by, I guess it was several hundred people, including the Commissioner of Education. I'll keep this brief, I guess the short thing for people to know is that we have been reimagining and reinventing teacher evaluations since October of two thousand and nine. We continue to be ahead of the pack. I think we've even avoided some of the pitfalls that are happening as we speak, and I think we will avoid them, and so I think it's very good news for this district that Jen and Barry have been leading this effort for now, it's about a year and a half or more.
Jessica?
Well, should I just go into my report?
Well, first, we have to go through the minutes, so. Do you want to save any good news for your report? Okay, good. And one of the good news things is that we attended UMass Dartmouth Primes at Salerno's, and my daughter was one of the recipients along with Jessica, so I won't talk about it, I'll let Jessica give us a little overview.
You can talk about it if you want.
No. I want to hear your version of the program and give us a little background, okay? Minutes of the meeting for April twentieth. Any corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jessica, you're up.
Imagine that. Well, I just want to start off by saying what UMD Primes is, as I'm sure much of the community doesn't know. It's for high school students who are interested in going into an engineering profession, or just enjoy math, or need a tutoral help with it. And throughout the course of the fall through spring, it usually ends around May and starts late September, you go each Monday night, and you go for about two, two and a half hours, you can get your math homework done, you get help with the teacher that's assigned to your subject of math that you're taking. And throughout that time, we do different competitions. This year, we did a bridge building one, they had a specific night for girls engineering where it focused on different career jobs for specifically women that aren't, or haven't been as popular as it should have been. And as I said, the other night, we had a banquet, and, oh, during Black History Month, we had a, each class this year was divided, each class was a group, and we were assigned, depending on the class size, if you had a larger class sizes, like most of the algebraists had, they had to do a report on two African-American people, but my class had to do one on a person from NASA, and my group was fortunate enough to win. So that was one of the prizes that I got. And was there anything else you want me to say about it?
No, it was a very, very nice night, put on by Salerno's and UMD.
Yeah, and I would encourage people who enjoy math, need the extra help in math, or who are interested in engineering program to join next year.
Can I ask just for?
Yes, please do.
How did you find out about the program?
I found out because my brother went, and he found out because his friend went. And though it is, it's announced over the intercom at the beginning of each school year, though I don't think it's as widely shown what specifically UMD Primes is, because I'm sure most students hear, oh, it's a math tutoring program. Okay. Most kids don't like math as it is, and I don't think they look into it, and they don't see the benefits that they could get. So I think if it's more widely known throughout the community, then more people would in turn go, because it is a free tutoring session that you can get help for. There is no cost to go.
Perhaps some of our math instructors might be able to make recommendations to different children who could benefit from the program.
I think that'd be wonderful help. And I would like to go on to say that the senior exit interviews will be, I think, starting in the next week or two, so to get their portfolios ready for those exit interviews. And I also want to talk about how many of the students who are in AP class, their tests have either finished, or they're finishing up by the beginning of next week, so that stress has been relieved after taking that test. I know I'm feeling very, the weight has been lifted off my shoulders, as we should say.
When would you know your score?
Um, middle of summer, I believe.
That's about right.
Yeah. I don't know if I want to receive my score, but.
You'll do just fine.
I hope so, I studied hard, as many of the other students did. And I have two more things to talk about. The Viking Theater Company over at the high school is holding a play called Ain't Misbehavin, and it's starting Thursday, which is May twelfth, at seven PM. And they will be also holding a show Friday and Saturday at the same time, seven PM. So those who would like to come and support the Viking Theater Company are, everyone's welcome. And then I would also like to finally talk about the dual enrollment that we have been presented with for next year. We had a seminar yesterday morning for the sophomore and junior classes about what dual enrollment is, and how they could start it, and if they decided to do it for next year, and if they're interested in it, then they would sign up with their guidance counselor to talk about more information, though as I'm sure most students from yesterday have heard, it would be a great advancement for them to have, because by going and taking a college course, they will both be receiving a college credit and a high school credit, so it's kind of like two birds with one stone, though there's a good outcome, I guess. Just wanted to put that out there.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Could I ask a question of our student representative?
Please do.
Ask as many as you want.
Thank you.
Though that's, I probably shouldn't say that to you.
Excuse me, Jessica, through the chair, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that most of your classmates don't like math.
Yeah.
Why do you think that is?
I think math, as you progressively get older, you take harder courses of math.
By older, you mean like seventeen?
I'd say entering high school.
Okay, just wanted to get the definition of older.
Yeah. I think I'm still relatively young, personally, and as math becomes harder, you have to put more time and effort into it. Most students don't like to put time and effort into things that don't come easy to them, and if they don't like doing something, they're not going to want to, say, take the UMD Primes program, because they don't know the benefits that it could have.
I appreciate your candor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Al-Sajja?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, one more question?
Yes.
And actually to Dr. Robinevich, how is the dual enrollment program being promoted or really encouraged?
I think as Jessica just said, they had, what grade level was in the auditorium?
Both sophomores and juniors were called down to the auditorium yesterday during their second period, and we had over an hour-long discussion with representatives that came from BCC Bristol College and Massachusetts, and they talked about the overall, what dual enrollment is, how you can get involved, and specifically for their schools. And I know, just bringing up Bristol, if you took one seminar, I mean, one course per semester, for them, it's free.
Okay, great. Is, was there any, anything said from, you know, at the high school of how this is gonna, I know that that was done, but to contain, I mean, you do an assembly, but then maybe you walk out the door, and is there going to be more promotion after?
I'm sure that the high school will be letting parents know, it'll be on their webpage and so forth.
Thanks, okay, thank you.
Al-Sajja?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next, request for a trip Costa Rica, I don't believe Ms. Sykes.
Is she here?
Okay, so, we'll just, I'll just, we'll table that for now, and when she comes in, we'll go to that part. Acceptance of gifts. Dr. Robinevich?
Yes, I would like to recommend the following gifts, and I suppose we should do one at a time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The first one is books from Carolyn Lazard, the book reviewer for the Associated Press, to Wareham High School.
That's the first one?
Yes.
Motion to accept the gift? We're out of time.
So moved.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous, next?
A two hundred dollar gift, that's a grant gift, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Big Yellow School Bus Program to the Deaconess School to defray the cost of the Grade Three students' visit to the Zeitarian Theater to see Charlotte Webb.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is that for this school year or next school year, where they'll be going to the, to go see Charlotte Webb?
I believe it's this school year.
This school year?
Are you looking for the date so that you can sign up?
So then I could go back to the Community Relations Committee and promote it.
I will get you the date. On this panel, I see.
Mr. Chairman, is that the Zeitarian Theater in New Bedford?
Yes. Is there another Zeitarian?
I don't know if there is another one, I just.
Yeah, it is the one in New Bedford.
That could have been a second one, I was just wondering.
There might be one in New York, right?
Or Abington.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous, next?
Recommend two thousand five hundred dollar gift grant from the CVS Case Mark Community Grant to purchase playground equipment at the Deaconess School.
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes.
The twenty-five hundred dollars, is that going to go towards, only towards equipment, and is the labor going to be volunteered, or is it equipment and volunteer?
The PTA has a fundraising committee for this project, and so this money will go for equipment, other money that they're raising will go for the groundwork and labor and so forth.
Entertain a motion, checks.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero, unanimous, next?
And we would like to accept matte board, which is used in art, for framing pictures from Gwen Mitchell to Wareham High School, valued at two thousand five hundred dollars.
Which one are we on, that's the last one?
The last one.
Entertain a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. That's it for gifts?
That's it for gifts.
No more, Dr. Robinevich?
Not tonight.
Okay, we'll go to the presentations by Mrs. Rotella. You have the floor. You have the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for inviting me here tonight. Dr. Robinevich asked that I share with the school committee two different presentations. The first one will be in regards to our Race to the Top grant and the initiatives that we are undertaking with that grant, and incorporating other grants as well. You've all heard a little bit about Race to the Top and a lot in the news. Here in our district, it has become an integral part of our district and school improvement plan, aligned with our strategic plan that we began working on a couple of years ago. This graphic represents the overview of these improvement plans and how it all interrelates and works together. And all of it under the umbrella, or under the awning, if you will, of Doug Reeves' ninety-nine ninety ninety strategies. Dr. Douglas Reeves, who is an educational researcher, a professor at Harvard, consultant, has done more than twenty years of research on schools where ninety percent of the population is below the poverty level, ninety percent is minority, and ninety percent of the students score proficient on state and federal standardized test. And those strategies are ones that, as a district, our teachers have studied, our administrators have studied, and we have incorporated these, as you will see, in our initiatives, as we align them with the strategic plan, the district improvement plan, and the overall goal to improve student achievement. The four key initiatives are reorganized supervision and evaluation plan, and the addition of instructional leaders to work with our students and mostly with our teachers, tiered instruction with a focus on literacy initially in grades one through five, realigned curriculum including the Mass Common Core Standards six through twelve, and Mass Core Course of Studies. Actually, it should say Mass Common Core Standards K through twelve. And then our fourth initiative is improved math instruction, vertical alignment, focus on grades five through twelve. These four key initiatives are our focus for the next three years, and they are all focusing on student achievement. As many of you know, our strategic plan set as the Wareham Public School mission to educate all students for life's responsibilities, challenges, and opportunities. This mission was coined and set more than six years ago, and we have continued to operate under that mission. And within that, our first goal of our district strategic plan is to provide a system of integrated programs and curriculum with rigorous expectations that assure proficiency in all core subject areas for all students. Those are the overriding goals. Then, within these goals, we have very specific goals or objectives that have been set for us by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. These are the specific test scores that the state is going to use to determine if we have achieved what we've set out to do, and that is improve student learning and academic achievement. You can see there that we, our goal is to improve ELA literacy achievement, with the percentage of students scoring proficient and advanced from sixty-two point seven percent, which is what we had last year, and increase it by seven point six percent, which would bring us up very close to seventy percent. Improved math achievement, increased proficient, advanced from forty-six point eight percent to fifty-six point nine percent. Reduce the achievement gaps for each low-performing subgroup in both ELA and math by twenty-five percent. Increase graduation rates from eighty point two to eighty-three point five percent. Reduce gaps in the four-year graduation rate for each low-performing subgroup by fifteen percent. These are lofty goals when you think that these numbers are the aggregate, so it is important that every student's achievement improve to reach these very specific goals. We believe that the, those goals plus the additional goals set by DESI are doable. Those additional goals are to increase the percentage of high school graduates who have completed the Mass Core from fifty-three percent last year to at least sixty-four percent. We, within the district, are setting that at ninety percent, and believe we'll make it with the new schedule by twenty-fourteen. Increase percentage of students who enroll in college within sixteen months of graduation from fifty-six point eight percent to sixty-four percent. Reduce the gaps of students who enroll in college within sixteen months of graduation for each low-performing subgroup by fifteen percent. Again, these numbers are calculated and determined by the department. We believe, much in the Doug Reeves research, that if you simultaneously work on systemic change and work on instruction in the classroom, student achievement does increase. And those five concurrent strategies for classroom instruction are a clear, what he calls laser-like focus on student achievement, clear rigorous curriculum choices, collaborative lesson planning and scoring of student work, and emphasis on writing specifically non- lesson planning and scoring of student work, an emphasis on writing specifically nonfiction expository writing, and frequent assessment of student progress within multiple opportu- with multiple opportunities for learning. As I go through the four initiatives, I'll try to come back and point out where these concurrent strategies are occurring, because it's important to note that all five are part of the total picture, the whole, in order to improve student achievement. No one works. In Dr. Reeves' research, he emphasized the fact that there is no program, there's no particular curriculum book, textbook, basal series, whatever you want to call it, that is gonna make it work. It's instruction and it's unified mission with everyone working together to improve student achievement through these five strategies. The first area, first initiative, incorporating these strategies is supervision and evaluation. As Mr. Swett noted earlier, uh, Dr. Rabinovich and he and I were at a seminar last evening in Boston, uh, look where they presented the new, uh, and proposed state evaluation system. We've been working on that, as he said, since October two thousand nine. That then rolled into our first initiative to continue working to develop what is currently a pilot at the high school into a district-wide program. Through this, all supervisor evaluators, whom we are calling instructional leaders, will be just that, part-time teachers and part-time instructional leaders. They will be trained in OAT, which is observing and analyzing teaching, and their roles will be expanded from department chairs at the high school and facilitators, curriculum facilitators in the lower level, to instructional leaders to increase not only supervision but also coaching and observation. The embedded belief is that, excuse me, a one-time or two-time annual walkthrough with an observation is not sufficient. Excuse me. Rather, teachers deserve better support, they deserve better supervision, and they need that reflective piece. They need to have someone who comes in and, and can sit down and talk with them what's working, what's not working, and how to move to the next steps. This year, the pilot was implemented at the high school with a revised teacher evaluation and observation protocol. Thank you, Mrs. Siemens. Uh, additional walkthroughs, teachers' goal-setting, and plans for student achievement are all part of the pilot. And through a combination of grant funds and both from RTTT and other grants as well as LEA funds, because we have to have a certain percentage of matching, which I'll talk more about in a few minutes, we believe that this pilot, this model, which will then expand to the district, not only reinforces the collaborative planning that is required for students' working and curriculum development, as in the research, but it also provides embedded professional development and reinforces that laser-like focus on student achievement. The second initiative, response to intervention. Mr. Luzon presented a detailed overview and information about our RTI program, uh, that has begun, and training is slated for all grade one through five teachers in tiered instruction for all students. That training begins in June and will go through next year for different grade levels and different cohorts. It also will provide coaching support through our consultants for the implementation of tiered instruction through this phased-in model. Integral to RTI is established progress monitoring with scheduling and resources to support tiered instruction. All of this fits in a part of those five strategies that have been so researched with, by Dr. Reeves across the United States. And with RTI, not only is there training, but teachers have opportunity to meet, to collaborate on what intervention students need, and they receive the coaching in order to be able to do the progress monitoring, to evaluate students' work, and redesign instruction when it's necessary. So far, all elementary teachers and staff received an overview in an initial session. Site visits have been conducted by elementary teachers and principals. We are currently reviewing and making an inventory of curriculum resources, uh, and there is a committee working on a full scope and sequence balanced literacy curriculum for ELA in K through eight. The first full week's training for our grade three teachers has been scheduled for June. Again, through this response to intervention program, we are reinforcing one of those strategies with differentiation and multiple opportunities for learning along with the other four strategies. The third initiative is alignment with the Mass Core and the Massachusetts Common Core Frameworks. I want to pause here to give a couple of definitions, 'cause between acronyms and the multiple uses of the same words, sometimes the Department of Education, uh, muddies the waters, I guess would be a kind way of saying it. Mass Core is a specifically designed high school curriculum outline or framework. It is a set of courses or a course of studies for high school students required for graduation. The Massachusetts Common Core Frameworks, or as they want to call them, the new frameworks, is the Massachusetts version of the National Common Core Frameworks that were developed by the Association of Governors across the United States and State Commissioners of Education. They came together along with researchers, the National Science Foundation, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, the National Council for Teachers of English, and developed these national standards. Then the states were invited to endorse those standards. At this point, all but two states have endorsed those standards. So forty-eight states in the District of Columbia have endorsed the National Common Core Standards. What was also built into that proposal was that any state could add up to fifteen percent more over and above the National Common Core Standards. So of course, Massachusetts took advantage of the option, and the new Mass Common Core Frameworks are the National Common Core Frameworks plus, they say ten percent. So it's, it's a rough amount. There's about ten new standards in addition to the Mass, the Common Core that are part of the MA, the Massachusetts Common Core. I want you to know that while this is one of our initiatives that has begun just this spring through the Race to the Top Grant, our instructional leadership team and our administrators have been reading and studying the National Common Core Standards for a year. We downloaded them when they were first released in March twenty-ten, and our instructional leaders tore them apart, sent in comments during the very brief review section, and have continued to work with them. So our teachers are well aware of what's required. And now we have a group of teachers working very specifically on the English Language Arts Standards. But, and in con- also concurrently, we had a scheduling committee at the high school who looked at the current schedule, looked at what kind of a schedule would be needed to allow all students to take the Mass Core Course of Studies. And, uh, Mr. Palladino has presented that proposal with, to you, so you have seen what the new schedule looks like. Through this block schedule, all students will be able to take the Mass Core Course of Studies and will be able to complete it, so that this year fresh, this year's freshman in twenty-fourteen will graduate with the Mass Core Course of Studies. Secondly, we have a committee working on developing a very detailed scope and sequence ELA literacy curriculum. This is a balanced literacy program, which means it includes reading, writing, speaking, listening, research, and it integrates science and social studies, because if our students can't learn those skills applied, then we're really not helping them to be ready for their future life. So this is what is being developed currently, and it is interesting, as I work with these ten teachers on the committee, their request is take away choice. Give us a, not just a framework, give us an outline. Tell us what we need to teach, what standards our students need to attain, and when we should do it. Give us the pacing. We want a little bit of wiggle room with maybe some choice, but not much, because when there's a lot of choice is when we fall into inconsistency. So we will be presenting to you sometime this summer, the new Wareham K eight Balanced Literacy Curriculum. Uh, and we continue, uh, among all of our teachers to, with training in the Common Core. The training sessions for the high school, the Cooperative and West Wareham Academy teachers in extended block instruction with differentiated strategies is going to be offered in June, and all teachers in all three of those schools will be invited to attend if they so choose. Uh, we will be piloting and modeling ELA and curriculum, literacy curriculum strategies with observers in, uh, one of our summer programs that you'll be hearing about, and then, of course, will continue in the fall. We are planning to model and train K eight teachers, not only in the aligned curriculum, but also with online access to resources and providing time for collaboration in specific building of lessons. They'll have the outline, they'll have the units, but then their lesson planning. We are also looking at, at the high school as part of this Mass Core, online learning with integrated technology training, as well as the dual enrollment program that you heard about earlier. I've been working with Mr. Palladino and Mrs. Freitas and Mr. Goldman, the guidance director, and it is really exciting, uh, and especially exciting to hear our student representative tonight talk about dual enrollment. Uh, we are really excited about the partnership with our local and area community colleges. One aspect of dual enrollment that I think is particularly helpful for all students is that if they complete at least the equivalent of one year of study in community college, so that could even be one course in the spring of their senior year, one course in the, the fall and the spring of their senior year, and they are accepted at a state college or university, they attend that state college or university at the community college tuition rate. So that is huge. So not only, for example, Bristol Community College is the only one that's offering free tuition, but it's a huge tuition reduction when they then go on to the university or for the four-year school. We are also, uh, we have had a pilot this year of, of one particular vendor with online learning at the Cooperative School. Early results are very, very positive. We're going to be having, uh, Mr. Plasko from the Cooperative School meet, uh, with Ms. Miranda from West Wareham Academy and Mr. Palladino from the high school, and bring in the teacher who's been working there at the Cooperative to talk about this particular program called E twenty-twenty and how it might be expanded next year, uh, for all three secondary schools. And again, that's an opportunity for our teachers, our students to take those courses that maybe we don't have enough, uh, registered to have a teacher, but we can expand to include the Mass Common Core for all stu-, the Mass Core for all students. Once again, this reiterates those strategies from Dr. Reeves. The fourth initiative is pre-AP math and science. I want to start first by defining pre-AP. This is not pre-AP in the sense of a preparatory course for an AP class in high school. Rather, pre-AP refers to the pedagogy, the instructional strategies that teachers implement beginning in grade five to raise the rigor of instruction, to be able to scaffold learning so that students can begin where they are and reach even higher potentials of learning as they move on through the grades before they even get to high school. We have established a vertical math team. Math is where we're beginning in this study, and we have teachers representing grades five through ten who have been meeting, reviewing curriculum, reviewing what is available for resources that we don't have, and planning both for curriculum development and training. We know that we will need to revise resources to fit into the scope and sequence curriculum for a full continuum specifically at the middle school, so that is where we're looking at for resources. Of course, the district math curriculum will be aligned with the Mass Common Core Frameworks, and those standard, integrated standards that include science and history and economics will be implemented through math, mathematics. The adopted aligned math curriculum and resources specifically for grades six and eight will be implemented in the fall, along with training and integration of science and technology in math applications, STEM. Training in pre-math and science instruction is being offered both this summer and in the fall, and the vertical math team will be some of the initial teachers trained. Sort of a humorous story with this is, we were in a webinar, um, a couple of our math teachers and myself, hearing about the pre-AP math training. And of course, through it, because it's through Race to the Top, the training is arranged by the Department of Elementary and Educat-, Elementary and Secondary Education, but they farm it out to vendors. So there was a vendor on this particular webinar who I don't believe has ever been in Massachusetts, because she tried to explain to me and our teachers that they didn't have to worry about driving to Worcester for the pre-AP instructional training, they could go to Springfield, 'cause it was right next to Fall River. So, uh, we had to give them a geography lesson before they began with math. But, uh, we are working on the training and trying to get it closer for our teachers and assuring them that we can't move Springfield, we have to move the training. But once again, this is reinforcement of the five strategies. How does the grant support work? The Race to the Top Grant, we are in the first of the three to four years of the grant. We have literally requested nearly a third of our funds so that we can rigorously begin, or aggressively begin, as they have told us, uh, in all four initiatives. We have also received, or have been promised, we have not yet received, target assistance grants through the District School Assistance Center, the DSAC. They had set up quite a complicated, uh, means of payment for these grants, and it took a while for grants management to figure out what they, and how they were going to do this. But as of Friday, uh, everything's approved and grants management thinks they have an accounting system in place that we can actually get the funds. We are also part of MMSI, uh, which is the Math and Science Initiative, uh, through the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. This is a, is an ongoing partnership, and that helps to support specific training in mathematics instruction and math applied through science. We are also required by the state to have LEA or local support matching funds, and our matching funds are between fifteen and forty percent depending on the project and initiative. And we, of course, try to keep it as close to fifteen percent as we can through additional grants. In the end, the evaluation and the conclusion is what counts. We need to be sure that the results in student achievement are measured through student growth as well as our district benchmark assessments. MCAS cannot be the only assessment. So we are developing, along with curriculum development, benchmark assessments. And let's see, um, I apologize, just may go back to the end. So that in evaluating these four initiatives, we will be looking at exactly how our students are improving, their level of growth, and where we need to tweak or make adjustments. The evaluation will also include observations of instructional strategies, review of lesson plans, and surveys and interviews of staff, student, and parents. Our instructional leaders, as part of the new supervision and evaluation protocol, will be integrally involved in this evaluation process. And in the end, we hope to have a grand celebration of student achievement. Would you like, Mr. Chair, for me to take questions and comments on this before I move to summer program?
Yes. I'll start with, any questions, so Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Tell me which slide, I'll go to it.
I suspect, I suspect this is a typo. Could you go to slide four, focus on student achievement?
Sure.
On the very first bullet?
That's a typo.
Yeah.
What is, what is the number supposed to be after sixty-two point seven, two thousand ten to something for two thousand fourteen? What is that supposed to be?
The one before this?
Yeah.
It should be, yes, it says two, seven point six percent. It should say increase sixty-two point seven percent, and the increase has to be seven point six percent, which puts it just over seventy- puts it just over 70 percent.
So it should be 70.3?
Yes, it should be.
Okay. Can you tell me how you came up with those percentages?
Oh, I didn't.
They're awfully precise.
They are incredibly precise, and they were dictated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Oh, I see. Isn't that, isn't that interesting? It's glad that they have such precision in what they know is going to be accomplished.
Yes, sir.
Well, that, that, that just makes me feel all warm and fuzzy. On the focus on student achievement, I, I must say that while I am, first of all, I consider it presumptuous for us to know what any high school graduate should do with the rest of their lives, but I am very interested in how well we've prepared them to do what they want to do, and how well they succeed in that effort. So the fact that they've enrolled is, is interesting. The fact that they complete it is far more interesting. Could you confirm with me that the high school guidance people are going to be, in fact, implementing an effort to follow students, and so that we can actually have some data with respect to what they achieve?
Yes, that project is underway.
Sounds like Dr. Rabidovich wants to weigh in.
In the high school improvement plan, they will come forward with the plan to measure this, and it will be beginning with this year's graduates.
I, I just, I suspected that was the case, I just wanted to affirm it. Thank you to everybody involved.
Yes.
Under response to intervention, could you tell me the role that teaming will play in this, in this effort?
Well, as you know, we implemented and initiated this year, teaming in grades four and five.
Right.
We anticipate extending that to grade three next year. Teaming will, as far as a direct role in-
For the sake of the people listening, could you define teaming?
Sure. Teaming is where two teachers share the same group of students, but not at the same time. So for example, in grade four, we have a team of two teachers, one of whom teaches math and science, and excuse me, the other teacher teaches English Language Arts and Social Studies. This is just one configuration. So between them, they may have 50 students. The students will go to the math teacher, one half of the students, and take math, while the other half of the students are in the English teacher's classroom, and have English or literacy, so English Language Arts and Reading. Then they will switch classes, the classes are next door to each other or across the hall from each other, and literally switch. So the teacher who taught math to the first group is now teaching math to the second group, and the teacher who taught English Language Arts to the first group is teaching English Language Arts to the second group.
So I don't want to take a lot of time. So you're still committed, the, the district is still committed to the teaming concept, you anticipate expanding it to grade three next year?
We do.
And you consider it an integral part of getting, achieving the gains that you're working towards?
It is really important, if, with this laser-like focus on student achievement, you must have solid content knowledge and solid rigorous curriculum. And part of what the research tells us is making those clear curriculum choices as to what to teach, how to teach it, and when students are developmentally ready to move ahead, takes a lot of training. And the content has increased X potentially in all of our core subjects, English, science, math, and social studies. To expect that a teacher can know all of that, and plan for all four subjects, and plan multiple scaffolding activities to, to reach the needs of each student in a differentiated approach, is almost unreasonable. I think it is unreasonable. So through teaming, literally, a teacher's preparation is cut in half.
Do you anticipate going beyond grade three, down to one or two, or do you think that's it?
No, no, and I'll tell you why.
No, no, I'm not suggesting you should.
Okay, but it's not developmentally appropriate.
Fine.
Correct.
Fine. I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't playing educator, I just wanted to know. Are parents aware of the teaming that is going to be taking place?
Yes, sir.
We have not had parent meetings about grade three, but we have in both of the elementary schools, they have discussed teaming with parents through various parent open houses, PTOs, et cetera.
Great, because I don't want them to be, to be surprised. Finally, a couple of questions on the grant support. Could you define, elaborate, and quantify these targeted assistance grants?
The target assistance grants are grants that we have always been eligible for because we're a Title I school district. In their inimitable wisdom, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education felt that these grants should be awarded through this system that they have established of district school assistance centers. And Dr. Rabidovich is laughing at me, because he knows I'm trying very hard to present this.
Without bias.
Without bias, thank you.
Despite her opening, despite her opening phrase.
The DSAC is a group of specialists, that they employ math, English, technology, reading specialists, and a retired superintendent is the director, who works part-time. And through these DSAC centers, the idea is that they will support and assist districts to improve student achievement. Therefore, all of our grants have to go through them for approval first. And then, once they approve them, then they go to the department for approval.
Are these new grants, or are these existing grants?
No, they're the same grants we used to get by just going through the department. They literally are Title I money.
All right. Now, these, these matching funds, grants.
Yes, sir.
How many of, how much money are we talking about that would be coming in grants? And how much, how many dollars are we talking about that we'd have to come up with to match in order to get these grants, and are these dollars budgeted?
The dollars are budgeted, because the way that we have written the grants, and I've worked very closely with our administrative team, and Dr. Rabidovich and I have spent many hours looking at these initiatives so that we could fulfill the requirement of matching funds. There's close to $200,000 total in grants between Race to the Top and the DSAC grants. It's just under $200,000.
So that means our liability-
For this year.
That means our liability is anywhere from 30,000 to 80,000.
Yes and no, because how we've written the grants, if you remember, and I'm going to quote you, Mr. Swett, when you read my Race to the Top proposal, you said, wow, you could drive a tractor-trailer through this.
I might have said that.
So it was written so that our matching funds are what we are currently doing.
Got it. I like it already. Enough said. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Sylvia?
I just got a couple of, just very, very quick things, you know, as you know, Mrs. Rotella, I've been a big fan of teaming, and I was probably on your case for a while now to put this in.
Yes, sir.
And, and you know, and I know, that, you know, teaming can go all the way through middle school and high school. There are ways to configure schedules at the middle school and the high school that provide a school within a school approach, and have a core of teachers working with a small group of students.
Absolutely.
And that's the best configuration. And maybe, you know, once they get the block in at the high school, that might be something that they look for in the future. But I think the teaming approach, because what it does is it builds on strengths and identifies weaknesses by a core of teachers working with the same kids. So I'm glad to see that that's happening, I'd like to see it even further expanded. But the two things that I didn't see on here that I think are imperative to its success of implementation, is I just think that we've got to start really being serious about developing a system of embedded professional development.
Absolutely.
We, we just can't, we, with all of these new initiatives, I mean, we're putting in some, some new stuff in math, we've got the pre-AP program and so forth, to leave it up to, well, we're, we're providing some training if you want to come in the summer, just doesn't, just doesn't work. We've got to figure out a way in which we can get embedded professional development, and get embedded common planning time at the middle and at the high school level. So I didn't see that anywhere in here, but I do think that that's maybe a missing, a missing ingredient.
It, it, but it, I, it isn't, I didn't highlight it, Dr. Sylvia, but it is in place.
Okay.
We have expanded and hope to further expand through scheduling, grade level, or and team planning time at the elementary. We have limited common planning time at the middle school, and with the new block scheduling, there will be common planning time at the high school.
So are we now, are we need now is the embedded professional development will be all set?
We have actually begun that.
Good.
We're doing it through our early release days, and we're doing it with lots of cooperation through some subbing and so forth during the school day.
Very good.
You're absolutely right, it cannot only be one-shot deals in the summer.
Thank you very much.
Miranda?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation. If you can go to slide seven.
Sure.
Yes. The, where I have, no, it's underneath Supervi-, Supervision and Evaluation, my, my seven on here is, for, where it says that Evaluation and Observation Protocols will, with frequent walkthroughs, as well as teacher goal-setting plans for student achievement.
Yes.
Will they'll be, where, where will specifics from, from each school be put? Will those be put in the school improvement plans of how often the walkthroughs will happen, or at least the suggested? Or when it comes to the format of, of the goal-setting for each one of the teachers, will that be, where, will more specifics happen in the school improvement plans, or at a district level of what we're suggesting?
The, the format has already been set by the state, so that each teacher now has to have an individual professional development plan. So, and those plans have to be aligned with the school and district improvement plans. So our teachers are already doing this, but they do it on a biannual basis. So under the new evaluation protocol, we are implementing something called Continuous Improvement Plan, or SIP, which is part of the state protocol as well. And the SIP is an individual teacher's professional improvement plan, or professional development plan, where they will set goals for instruction, for student achievement, and for their own professional development. That will be confidential between the teacher and their observer evaluator and their administrator. But it will have to be aligned with the school improvement and district improvement plans, so that the, the format and the protocol or procedure for implementing that will be laid out by the district, and is part of the new evaluation tool. The specific plan itself for that SIP is wholly the responsibility, or the ownership of the teacher and the administrator. As far as the frequent walkthroughs, we're not dictating how many. We've talked round numbers in the committee, and again, this is a work in progress. And I think it has to depend on the teacher, and on the observer evaluator, or the instructional leader, and the principal. For example, the instructional leader may see that math teacher A is right on target. He scaffolds his instruction, he identifies student strengths and link with weaknesses, he differentiates, he provides for both direct and small group instruction, as well as individualization. So that instructional leader for that math department, or that math teacher, may say, okay, I can walk through here once a month, and I know things are going well. But maybe math teacher B is new, is still learning how to identify individual strengths and weaknesses, and needs more support, so will walk through more frequently.
And I understand that, I, I think, though, there still needs to be some level of goal-setting from school to school, on what at least the expectation is.
There, there isn't, we have, I mean, as I said, it's a work in progress, we're still negotiating, but there, we have discussed round numbers for expectation of walkthroughs.
I just, I, so the reason why I'm asking this question is that I, you know, a year from when we're looking at results, I just don't want us to be here next year or the year after, and basically saying, you know, we needed to tighten that up a little bit more, we needed to communicate a little bit better. So I think my expectation would be, in the school improvement plans, that this section around supervision, supervision and evaluation is addressed in the school improvement plans, and there is a goal at each one of the schools that talks, you know, about this. It's just, I just want to put that out there.
That's a good point.
I don't believe it'll be in this year's school improvement plans, but that is something for us to talk about in, next year. I mean, this is still going to require a lot of training as we implement this. But I think that's something to consider.
Okay. Okay, I'll bring it up when the school improvement plans come around, too. The, if you go to at least my slide nine that's on here, it's Initiative Three. The third bullet on the right-hand side around Model and Train K Teachers to Align Curriculum. Will this be done through, when, when it comes to the reporting out, or what they're doing, is that going to be done through Power Schools?
No.
Okay.
No. This, this is teacher training, and that would be done through the instructional leaders and the building administrators.
Okay.
Power School is a student information system.
Right, but I know that, at least from what I understand, at the high school level and the middle school level, that the instructors, the teachers are able to put up a type of lesson plan, or at least goals up there, so then parents are able to review it and then support the teacher in that. I know that there's been a lot of talk in the elementary, at the elementary level of, of giving access to parents at the elementary level, so then that could go on. And so when I, when I look at K three eight, I'm thinking at the elementary level, that if this is going on, that if there, I just, I'm, I'd like to push as hard as I can for that to happen sooner than later, that we are opening up Power Schools to elementary parents, only because I, the feedback that I've been receiving from middle and high school, and just that access goes so far, and I know that the middle, that the elementary schools are doing a lot, you know, to communicate with parents, but this is just another way to do that.
I would agree, and I think teachers do post assignments and post lesson plans, especially long-term assignments. What we also have is something called Rubicon Atlas. It is an online curriculum tool for teachers, where the new ELA, for example, scope and sequence curriculum will be posted, so teachers can share their lesson plans, can collaborate on unit resources. And that is where this, what this is specifically referring to. Ideally, what will happen is, what is in Rubicon Atlas for the curriculum and the lesson planning and the units, will align with the teacher's assignments and the students' grades that are posted in Power School.
Okay. All right. And I know that my next question is subjective, but what will prevent us from achieving the goals that you lay down on one of the first slides? I mean, if you had a crystal ball, and what, what do you see as potential barriers to us achieving these goals?
I think the goals are aggressive, but doable. I think the improvement, because we're talking about the aggregate, and those aggregate improvements in ELA, literacy achievement, and math achievement, I think are very, very doable. To reduce the achievement gaps among our low-performing subgroups is more difficult, and it is more of a moving target, for the very reason that the subgroups change continuously, and they're relatively small. So that if we have 20 students in a given year, let's say in a special education subgroup, and their achievement is raised, so some of them move on, and we improve in that particular subgroup, the next year, it could be a different 20 students in a different subgroup. So that's the most difficult goal, because subgroups, they're all looped together, or they're all lumped together.
I'm sorry, the subgroups are set by DESI, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the category of the subgroup might not change, or are you saying that DESI might all of a sudden come up with?
No, the categories will not change. There are various minorities, ethnic minorities identified by DESI, it's low-income, and it's special education, are disabled.
But do you mean the needs of the subgroups?
The needs of the subgroup change, but the actual students may change.
The composition of the subgroups will change.
I'm sorry?
The composition of the subgroups.
Exactly, the composition of the subgroup could change. That is- That is the most difficult to measure. And the other complication with subgroups, I mean, I absolutely believe in this, and I'm a strong advocate that all students can learn, there shouldn't be an achievement gap. But we know there is, and what complicates it is, is if we have a child who is low-income on free and reduced lunch, is a member of a minority, and receives special education services or is on a 504, they're in three subgroups.
Yep.
So they're counted three times. So that's, that's the most difficult.
Okay.
Are our teachers aware of it, and will we be targeting strategies? Absolutely, and I think the most encouragement for those goals are the fact that we are fully implementing tiered instruction through RTI.
That's, okay, that's what I was, I was thinking too, about RTI to help that. So the last statement that I'll just make is that these goals up here, you know, are just very specific to student achievement, and we talked a lot about in the school improvement plans that there was going to absolutely across the board be a goal on student achievement in each one of the school improvement plans. So I think that when we do get to the school improvement plans, we start reviewing them for next year, I'm going to be referring back to these and would want to see them put into this format. If these are the district goals and what's been, you know, brought down by DESI, that I'll want a direct correlation with, with what's up there in the school improvement plans.
There will be correlation, Mr. Chairman, but there will be differences.
Sorry.
Because each school has its own improvement goals depending on where the class is.
Yep.
And the subgroups in that particular. And as Janice was talking about the changing subgroups, you need twenty, I believe, or more students to have a subgroup. So one year we may have Native Americans as a subgroup, the next year, somebody has moved out and we don't have a subgroup of Native Americans. But we may have a Hispanic subgroup that appears, because all of a sudden you've reached that critical mass. So there are, it is a changing target, which makes it difficult to improve, as Janice said, but it is something we are definitely working on, and all the schools are. And you will see student achievement as a goal in all the school improvement plans, but like I say, they will be different depending on where they are at and the slope of the line for improvement.
Right, and through you, Mr. Chair, I understand that, but I would see that the buckets would be about improving ELA and literacy, including math, that, that's what I mean, where there has to be.
Absolutely, I believe they have been and they will continue to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to go on record, however, as saying, despite the fact that I have very high expectations for the achievement of our students in this district, I reject categorically the ability and the right of the federal government to impose goals on this district and the state to impose goals on this district. They haven't the foggiest notion, A, how to achieve them, and B, they don't know this district, and I just want that on record. Which means that frankly, those numbers have no significance to me whatsoever. However, the individual school improvement plans that people like Mr. Palladino and Mrs. Siemens do present to us with their own goals, they have great deal of significance to me. I just want to go on record with that.
Thank you. One question, Janice, slide five, and this is just sort of what Rhonda was talking about, aggressive goals. I jotted down the number ninety percent. Do you think your goal is really high, or theirs is low, going from the fifty-three to sixty-four?
I wish we could afford to bring Doug Reeves here. We have, all of our administrat, or over half of our administrators heard him speak a couple of weeks ago, and all of our administrators will be attending a two-day conference this summer. And if you read what he writes, I absolut, you will believe it can happen. It takes everyone on the same bus, if you will, in the right seats, moving forward at the same time. Are we getting there? Yes. The, what gives me pause is that when Dr. Reeves went back to those same schools ten years later, over seventy percent of them had reached one hundred, one hundred, one hundred. I don't know that we'll ever reach a hundred percent proficiency. I do believe we can reach ninety percent proficiency, but I think it does take everyone working together, it takes the embedded professional development, the collaboration, it takes teachers understanding student learning, and that's part of the professional development, even more than content. And that's what we're working on. And in fact, it was in the ELA Curriculum Committee this afternoon, that was a big discussion, was, we know we need to be tra, we know we need to provide training and strategies and content, but we also need to provide train, ongoing training for our teachers to understand student learning, because every student does learn differently. And you've got to be able to identify that and then pick the right strategy for instruction. So it's exciting, the fact that it's doable and has been done, gives us all encouragement. And I know, I don't want to pick on Mrs. Siemens, but I know for a fact that she handed out the study to her faculty at a faculty meeting, and they all read it and came back. And would it be fair to say, Mrs. Siemens, they were enthusiastically supportive that we can do this?
Thanks, Doctor.
What nobody mentioned, and when, I forget, maybe it was Rhonda that asked a question about barriers, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention resources, and the fact that when we show the gap in funding for this district versus the state, that we are making progress, but we could make far more progress if we were adequately funded. So I'd like that on the record as well.
That's new. Thank you. Thanks, Jan.
You're welcome.
What I'd like to do now is, our guest is here for the Costa Rica. Yes, I'm going to have. Janice, I'll give you a break, you can enjoy some coffee and appetizers. I'll ask our guest to come up for the presentation on Costa Rica, and then Mrs. Rotella will come back with the summer program, I believe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because one of the co-advisors has a five-thirty appointment in the morning.
Do, Mrs. Sykes, do you have a thumb drive? I was.
This is part of the seduction, right?
Yes. We have, we have a chaper, we have a chaperone for you down at the end of the table.
Already told him that, I mean, you guys already picked a chaperone, so I was just going to put it down, until you open that back up again. Unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to attend, but it sounds like a great trip.
Yes, it is, it's freezing in here.
Oh, my God. Yeah, it is.
I'm hot.
Slopes are too many, Jack, I'm like, no. Always listen to mom.
Yes.
It seems to become more and more true throughout the years.
They're very mature, because most young people don't understand that until they're about twenty-five.
The touchpad is not particularly sensitive.
Doesn't mean I always listen, but. I regret it at times like now.
No, I mean, unless you want to support the fifth quarter concept. Okay, then I'll just. Now, you don't have to. Definitely not.
I'm sure it would be easier with an iPad, Lynn.
Yes, it would.
Okay, good evening. Mr. Barrios and I very much appreciate your willingness to include us in your very busy school board meeting this evening, and we're going to try to keep this brief. Mr. Barrios already gave you, I'm okay? I'm using my teacher voice, I'm good? Okay. The brochure, and I'm going to run you through a power, a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then hit a couple of items, emphasize a couple of items on a separate PDF that specifically addresses concerns that adminis, school administrators and school board members often have regarding EF Tours trips. As you're well aware, the high school, faculty members from the high school have already very, have already led a number of very successful tours for high school students from Wareham High School, and we're very excited about this one, because we believe very emphatically that it's important for our students to be offered the opportunity to gain a worldview of what's happening in the rest of the world, and actually, not just virtual opportunities for tours and so on via the internet and technology, as much as I love technology, but to also be able to be there and immersed in an environment and learn about cultures other than our own. So, and we chose Costa Rica because it's a very different culture, and also because our trips from EF Tours trips so far from the high school have all focused on mostly European countries, and we wanted to try a completely different approach. This is a more hands-on, active tour than most of the European tours, and we felt it might also appeal to different kinds of students. As well as being, along with being very fun and very active, it's also very educational. And after I finish with the PowerPoint and my part of the presentation, Mr. Barrios, who's actually toured in Belize and Costa Rica, we'll spend a couple of minutes talking about Costa Rica. So, this is again, from EF Tours, the newfound confidence and independence, of course, from just getting out there and exploring, and under guided direction as a tour director full-time with us for the entire tour, as well as teacher chaperones. But it gives students the opportunity to learn in, in the environment itself. New cultures, actually go and see famous sites, see them for yourself. They're, they, they are among the lowest prices with the highest quality of any of the, of the educational travel organizations, and we've very, been very, very pleased with our affiliation with them in the past. The itineraries are very educational, experiential learning they're going to be on this trip. They will be planting a tree at one point, they'll be visiting a number of environmental kinds of locations to see, for rainforests, the canopy and so on, to see for themselves about that. And as I've already said, there's a twenty-four-hour EF Tour Director with the group around the clock on, on the tour, providing insight about the destination, tips about things, local things and so on. And they have, EF Tours has forty-five years of experience in a worldwide presence. I'll talk in a minute again about the worldwide presence aspect. We are indeed traveling with probably the safest and most reputable of all of the travel organizations that works with students. Hundreds of offices in more than fifty countries. We will be landing in San Jose, and there is an EF Tour office right in San Jose. So not only will we have a EF Tour Director with us the entire time, who is bilingual, who speaks both English, English and Spanish, we will also have at our access, if we need it, the, at the tour office, the staff of the tour office in San Jose. We will arrive in country in San Jose, and we will be departing from San Jose at the end of the, at the tour. There's also a twenty-four-hour emergency on-call service, so you can reach EF Tours day or night while a, is particularly comforting to parents, so that they know that while their son or daughter is in a foreign country, that if they've got a question that they can call, or a concern they can call. The peace of mind program allows us, for our tour, up to thirty-five days before the departure date, if something comes up unexpectedly, that we can still change our tour or departure date up to thirty-five days before the, the expected departure. So that's really a good thing to have available to us. By group travel, how does it work exactly? A group with a similar tour preferences and departure dates will be grouped together on, share one motor coach. So if we were able to fill the bus, as they put it, then we would have the entire motor coach. We probably will have, will probably fill about half the bus, and therefore we will be sharing the bus with another school group from another school somewhere else who have the same tour that we do and the same dates. And which we consider to be a great opportunity for students to interact with, students who have a similar interest in, in touring the same country. This also, by combining groups that way, it makes the tours more, equally affordable, whether the group is only six students or forty students. And that means that the lower prices mean more students get to see the world. And it allows, as I've already said, them to meet other travelers from around the country. The flexible date range and similar tour options, so by the date coming, arrival and departure, and by the, the type of tour that it is. Okay, this is our actual itinerary. On day one is when we arrive in Costa Rica in San Jose, and that again is where there is an EF Tour office, right in the city. We'll be going to the Aranale region, there's ecosystem exhibits and trails there, we'll also see the Coas volcano, one of the active volcanoes in the world, hot springs, and this is the map that shows where we'll be, and you have that in that brochure. Mr. Barrios will be talking a little bit more about this.
Not to cut off, but the, the country's quite small, the roads are not great, so the travel's not fast on the roads, so it may take you two to five hours to travel across the country to another destination. A lot of the travel will be done in a bus, of course, it shapes planes with other groups. I myself have been to Aranale, Monte Verde, I have not been on the Pacific coast of Cararara. Manuel Antonio I have also been to, and of course, San Jose flying in and out, so I have some basic experience for all those places in Costa Rica.
Okay, so, day three, they're doing a kayaking tour with Aranale, and I will visit this Fortunata waterfall. On day four, they will be on the Monte Verde Reserve, there is, and they're going to visit a local school. This is, there is a, everything here is included, this is a complete tour package. All meals are included, as well as everything on the itinerary, except for two, two places where you see optional. This is an optional horseback riding activity. The other kids will just kind of hang at the Monte Verde Reserve, and then if students wish, they can, they can add this on. Day five is the Santa Elena Cloud Forest, they're going to plant a tree in the reserve in Monte Verde, and then they also participate in a canopy adventure. So they're going to get the bird's eye view of the tree canopy. Day six is in Cararara, and they will be visiting the Biological Reserve and travel to the Central Pacific coast. I'm sure you know Mr. Barrios from the high school is a science teacher, so not only has he traveled to Costa Rica twice, but he's also a high school science teacher, so this will be a great opportunity. We've also got our own science guy with us, as well as the tour director, who'll be pointing out things to us. Okay, so, on day seven, yeah, the Manuel Antonio National Park. And then day eight is a, back to San Jose, and here, this is the other optional one, this is a folklore evening.
It always happens.
Okay. The power isn't going to go out, and we're not going to lose everything, right?
Just think of it as a canopy.
Okay. And then this is the other optional one that students can participate in if they wish that, like live cultural entertainment, cultural dances into Costa Rica, and food. And then depart for home. As I mentioned, all their meals are, all meals are included in this, all hotels, all transportation, and so on. Everything is included. So, let me move on here. Okay, this is the, this is the costs. Our proposed date of departure is Friday, February 17th, 2012. February vacation next year. Our proposed return date is Saturday, February 25th, 2012. This is the nine-day tour. We did not opt for the 10, there's a one-day extension, which involves whitewater rafting, which we did not opt for. We will be departing from Boston. The enrollment fee, this is a one-time fee. Should any student participate in an additional EF Tours trip later on, they don't pay the enrollment fee again, only once. This is the basic program, and it includes everything. $1,285. They did offer an early enrollment discount, which we missed the deadline on. Departure fees are, this is the best estimate that they have right now. That's essentially airport fuel surcharges and so on. And if it ends up costing, and then as it gets closer to our actual departure date, they will have a more accurate current, that's what it says, current departure fee, because that was their best estimate at the time this was done. So it could be a little more, it could be a little less. And then if it turns out to be actually less, everybody gets a slight refund, whatever it is, when we get back. The weekend supplement, that's just a fee for being in country on the weekend. Peace of Mind Program that I mentioned already, where if we need to have a change of plans and move our trip, then that's free and there's no penalty at all, unlike airlines. Okay, so for students, the total price would be $1,717. Actually, you need to add this back in. So it's actually $1,817. And that's just the adult price. I can come back to this if there are questions. And then again, this is what is included, the airfare, hotel accommodations, all transportation, breakfast and, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. The full-time presence of the EF Tour Director to educate and inform and point things out, guided sightseeing tours all the way through, and the entrance fees to all of the attractions that we'll be visiting. All beverages, all, and lunches as well for the Costa Rica tours. And then optional insurance, that is an extra charge. The departure fees, they calculated in as extra already. Tips, spending money, insurance, and a passport. It is required, of course, to obtain a passport for this. We have decided, as the teacher chaperones, that we are going to make the optional insurance mandatory for our students. It's $145 extra. And feel that that's... What happens is if, it provides, it's basically travel insurance. And it also allows, if they happen to, we hope certainly nobody gets sick and has to go to a hospital, but if they were to need that, then the EF Tour Director comes in. He handles all of the insurance paperwork. He handles, and it's insurance that they cover and they know.
Basically covers tour cancellation, interruption insurance.
And that as well.
Personal belongings, medical issues, accident insurance, $35,000 coverage, cash on hand if you need it, it's really just child's insurance.
Yeah, right.
In addition to the liability insurance that EF Tours supplies.
Right. So yes, in addition to the liability stuff, but there's also, this is an additional one, and as Mr. Bariel says, includes all of that, plus the medical coverage that's there, and no worries about, he does all the paperwork, and it's all taken care of. And then, this is the payment plan. And they're just giving an example here. They, what they usually do, someone, of course, if they wanted to, could opt to pay the whole thing at once, or only in two payments, but this is, make it easy and affordable for people that they can make a monthly payment. And then up to 25 days before departure. And then this just gives you an example of somebody that has that as their price, and is going 60 months later, and that would be their monthly payment for a trip that's a lot more expensive than ours. And this is again, the all-inclusive insurance plan, tour cancellation, interruption, medical and accident, baggage and property, flight delay insurance, 24 access to an English-speaking representative. About, for example, medical. Okay, and then as we mentioned, we've decided it's best that we make this mandatory to everybody. Okay, and then passports. And we'll...
We'll be responsible.
We'll be responsible for making sure that all of our students take care of that. Okay, and then that's it. Okay, now, the other one.
Now, in terms of the country, why she's pulling that up, I've been to the country twice. To give you an idea, it is a third-world country. Do you feel unsafe in Costa Rica? I did not. There's some places that would be unsafe, sure. There are always gonna be portions of the country you don't wanna particularly be in at nighttime, so forth. None of these areas, Costa Rica's economy is based on tourism. They wanna draw people in. I remember a statistic, my wife, it went across her desk with her job, that the number one country for social security checks out of the United States goes to Costa Rica. So to give you an idea, I mean, it's not this place that you should be feeling intimidated by. In terms of the wildlife and dangers and that, I go searching out for these animals, and it's very difficult to find them. I've been there twice. I've been to remote places where I've taken planes within the country and boats to get to, and I still didn't see the things that I wanted to. So in terms of us walking into a rainforest and having some sort of issue with wildlife and so forth, it's pretty slim. But could it happen, sure, accidents could happen. What other things can I offer up?
Any? Okay, so this shows you that they literally do have hundreds of offices around the world, including San Jose, which will be our arrival and departure city in Costa Rica. And then... Okay, and then on the commitment to safety, some of these things, we already talked about it. This is EF Tours' global liability insurance plan, so that all group leaders, that would be all of the high school teachers that are chaperoning, are automatically covered on their liability insurance for the duration of the trip, in addition to what they offer students, and then our, the additional one that we're going to go with. And then, I'll be here on safety and support. Again, the worldwide presence, an experienced EF Tour Director who's bilingual and knows the country extremely well. The Peace of Mind Program that I already mentioned, that is, we can make changes and adjustments up to 35 days before with no penalty. There's a tour link that keeps parents and travelers connected, so that they can use GPS technology and kinda know where they are, where we are each day. And then tour consultants and customer service department to help a parent make call and be able to talk to a human being and, you know, get message to their center daughter. Okay, so I'm gonna turn minute two over to Mr. Bariel, and then we will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. In terms of the trip, it was just a really great opportunity. Each time I visited Costa Rica, I kept telling my wife, I would love to have the kids see this place. And in terms of the interest of the high school, when we said that we wanted to have this trip, we had about 50 kids show up in the first meeting. And they were all excited. And I just wanted to make it known to them that you better be in for, you know, long hikes, looking around at your scenery, it's not gonna be laying out at the beach, it's not that kind of trip. It's an opportunity to see something that you cannot see anywhere else in the world. I mean, I still get goosebumps in my back when you get into the rainforest. I mean, being up in a cloud forest, literally up with the clouds, is an amazing experience. In terms of culture, they're gonna get to see how some people around the world live, and it's not like the way you and I live. And they'll get a unique perspective of that. And that's why when Lynn asked me, would you like to be a chaperone, I said, if I can do it, I would definitely be there. And it was a unique opportunity. Initially, we were going to go to Belize, but the price was just, it wasn't attainable for our kids. And this itinerary definitely suited the needs. And in terms of cost, if you were to go out and do this on your own, it would be much more expensive. As a group and offering all these activities, you'd be well over, I'd say, $2,500 to $3,000. And in terms of, I've also made known to the students that are interested, it's not about the places you're going to stay at and how nice they are. This is an experience to immerse yourself in the country, see the different ecosystems, and enjoy your stay. That's the thing that I keep driving home to them. And we still have a pretty large group of students that are interested in going.
Questions? Rhonda?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My husband and I were there a year and a half ago. And I have to echo everything that you said. For us, when we were there, we kept saying over and over again, our 20-year-old, how we just couldn't wait for him to have an opportunity to go, and what an amazing experience it was. So I just wanna start off that I think that this is an amazing opportunity for our kids. Let me just ask, is it, is it a senior class trip? Is it just seniors, or is it juniors and seniors?
No.
It's open to all of the high school students?
Right.
Okay. I just didn't know.
So we have currently sophomores, current sophomores and juniors. The current seniors, of course, because we're going next year, can't participate. And also, it's set up so that a student, let's say we have a, and it was open to freshmen, sophomores, juniors. And even, I suppose, if a freshman comes in next year and is really interested and wants to work really hard to fundraise, we are gonna offer fundraising opportunities. If we're approved, we'll offer fundraising opportunities to help students. We have polled the kids to find out, and that's something that some of them would like some help with raising money.
Right, I mean, there'd be a limited amount of spaces. And based on how many students, we really seem to have strong interest. I don't see how a freshman next year would probably move into a spot, but it could happen. Predominantly right now, it looks like juniors and seniors of next year will be attending the trip.
We have 30 committed, very seriously committed students right now.
Okay, and glad to hear that you're gonna hopefully be offering fundraising opportunities so then everyone will have a chance. Are there any grade benchmarks that you have to achieve to...
Well, definitely, in the meetings that we had too, I said, you know, looking around the room, I recognize some of your faces and I haven't had you in class. In other words, there's some discipline issues and, of course, grades as well. If your behavior is not representative of what we want at Wareham High School, you won't be going on a trip. You know, and I made that known to the folks that were in the room at that moment. Once we get close to crunch time, like we have an occasion to run the trip, these are definitely things that Lynn and I are going to have to look at.
So ultimately, it's up to the chaperones, administration of the high school, decide who goes and who doesn't?
Right. And we've, again, as Mr. Bariel said, we've made it very clear right from the very first interest meeting, that we will be monitoring them.
Okay, great. Just a couple more questions. Are you staying in San Antonio, San Jose? Will you be staying there and then going out from there, or is it right outside?
Right, that's what it seems like, a little ride. We'll be staying in San Jose one night.
I was surprised with, I was surprised with all the cultural opportunities in San Jose, that there was nothing in the itinerary to visit, cultural museums.
When is the arrival time in San Jose the first day?
We don't, I asked her about that, and she said it would all depend on, it's too far in advance for us to know exactly when we would arrive.
Okay, but there might be opportunities for them to see some of the cultural...
Right, the first night we're there, and then... And then, again, we were there day eight, and that's the night, our last night in the country, and that's the, that's the folk life evening, so that's another opportunity for students to explore.
I can imagine they want the flexibility of those two days based on travel, so maybe that's why they don't book stuff.
And then just my last question, Mrs. Sykes, will you be going on the zip line?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
I have been on high adventure, high adventure experiences before, low ropes and high ropes and whitewater rafting. I may not look like I do all those kind of things.
No, I just need to make sure that every chaperone will be excited.
I will be doing the full meal deal.
Terrific. All right, because that should be a requirement for any chaperone that's on it, that there's no standing on the sidelines.
Taking the pictures, no, no. I will be right in the middle.
If the chaperones willing to go, we have a couple teachers over at the high school that are very interested. Whether they're definitely going to go, I don't know. Ms. Shealy, who's also a science teacher and has also been employed as an EMT for several years, will be attending possibly. Ms. Claudia Baptiste, also a foreign language, who speaks fluent in Spanish, is from Colombia, and she's very interested in going as well. So it's kind of a diverse group to help lead the group through Costa Rica.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Director Sylvia?
Por dos doctores. Dos preguntas. Two questions. I see that you've got a near mark, or you've got like a target of 30. It seems to me that if you're gonna provide fundraising opportunities, that maybe, given the fact that you have to share the bus, that if we cut up that to 60, and we give more opportunity for our kids, you wouldn't have to share the bus, and maybe it would reduce the cost if you do a little economics of scale, so to speak. So I don't know if that's something that you've considered.
When I think of bringing 60 kids there, I get a little nervous, to be honest with you.
EF Tours requires a one-to-six ratio. So we would need to bring that many chaperones with us. And right now, we have that 30. It's, that's not all of the students that express interest. That is the students who have come forward, who have expressed seriously committed interest in the trip at this time. We didn't, we didn't really, we've kind of done some interest level stuff, but since we weren't yet approved by the school board, we could only do so much.
Well, if you get, if you get the requisite number of chaperones, it's always been my experience that Wareham kids always do you proud. And I've taken them out of the country too. So I don't think you have anything to worry about, whether it's 60 or six. They usually are pretty cooperative. So I just, I'm all for experiential education, and the more the merrier. So I kinda hate to see it limited to 30, but, you know, it's, it's fine.
Right, right. I just, in terms for me, I think about like walking through a rainforest and stuff with that many numbers.
I understand.
And it just, I don't know, it opens to a little more liability, I think, personally.
One voyage.
You know, but like you said, if the kids are acting appropriately, it doesn't matter the number.
Good luck.
Jeff?
Sounds fabulous. My, my memory of Costa Rica, just from studying a little bit, it's a relatively unique country because it has a police force and no army. I think that's still true.
Yes.
Which makes it, which makes it relatively unique as a country. My own experience down there personally was not Costa Rica, was Ecuador on the way to the Galapagos. And my guess is your greatest risk, not gonna be the rainforest, it's gonna be in San Jose. Because my greatest risk was when I was in Quito. The capitals are filled with all sorts of risks. So just take, be careful in San Jose.
Be vigilant.
The only serious, important question I have is, a group just came back from Greece, correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me, do you do any follow-up questionnaires with the kids and perhaps the parents with respect to these trips? And what were the results of the Greece trip?
That, that would be the, the tour leaders for that trip.
Maybe Mr. Palladino can shed some light on.
Yes. They've already had two follow-up meetings already with the Greece trip, and there is some continued educational opportunities after the fact. I know one of them was more of just putting some closure to the trip and talking about the impact on each student individually. And the second meeting was a little more social in nature. It was more to create a slideshow, so the students could have a souvenir to keep with them with all the pictures, and they did the slideshow, and I think they had all the pizza. So it goes beyond what happens during that one week.
That, that's great, but actually, what I was getting at, was there any negative feedback at all in terms of, did we make any mistakes in the planning process?
We've got, as Lynn said, EF Tours has been around for, you know, 40 years or so. We've got, uh, as Lynn said, EF tours has been around for, you know, forty years or so. Um, we've been involved with them. This, this trip to Greece was the third trip, uh, through EF tours, through Wareham High School. Uh, they don't leave a, a, a lot. Um, everything is scheduled, everything is calculated, timeframes, their hustle. And I was speaking, uh, as you may remember, there was a little uprising in Athens at the time that our kids were scheduled to be there. They ended up repositioning their whole trip and changing everything. So where I had her and I was, I was giving Dr. Ravinovich some feedback as to where they were, was not where they really were. They, they changed the whole tour to main- maintain the safety of the students. Um, they're, they're walking and touring, uh, fourteen, fifteen, sometimes sixteen hours a day. Um, and so it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty good hustle for that whole week.
Bottom line, no negatives.
There have been no negatives at all for all three trips. As a matter of fact, the unique piece was, uh, they, they actually can request tour guides and they, they've had for, uh, for two of the trips, the same tour guides in, in two different countries. So it's, it's been positive.
And there's been people going back twice in this trip as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'd like to get Dr. Ravinovich's, uh, opinion on this and feedback.
Um, I, I am in favor of it. Um, I would have liked a little more notice. Um, I like the every other year so that there's a couple years to fundraise for a family to come up with approximately two thousand dollars. Uh, sometimes it's difficult, particularly in these economic times. But, um, I am in favor of it and, uh, so when you're planning your next one, we may think about giving a little more lead time to allow for fundraising.
Thanks. On the, uh, subject of fundraising, all the money that comes in from the fundraising, is that put in to a pool or is it per child? So if one child raises eighteen hundred dol- eighteen hundred dollars, it comes off of their fee? Uh, because my concern would be that child that is only able to come up with a thousand dollars. What happens?
Well, typically, depending on the type of fundraiser, if it was an individual fundraiser, whether it's selling candy or doing something to that nature, it'd be directly taken off their tab. If it was a car wash, it would be divided among the participants and that sort of thing. Um, I've found with, with the high school students, given more time for fundraising sometimes, doesn't seem to matter. I'm a senior class advisor this year and they've been given four years to pay their class dues. And I had two kids pay their class dues early. That's it. So it's kind of last minute Sam with everybody and unfortunately, some kids can come up with the money and some are unable to. Uh, like Dr. Ravinovich said, you wanna open that window up for kids that can't get the money together or really driven to actually have opportunity to pull the money together. So that was the one drawback of having a short timeline at the moment.
And I've been a classco advisor as well, class of two thousand and four. And, and my experience was the same. But kids don't use that whole four years. And we talk to the kids and ask them, you know, what do you think? Is this too soon? And they said, no, 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 you know, we, we can do this, especially some of them. Some of them said, no, they wouldn't need fundraising and others said fundraising would help support them.
Probably should ask the parents.
And we asked the parents as well. We, we did a, we had a parent informational meeting and, and emphasized very clearly this was a proposed trip and it was not approved by the school committee yet. Um, just proposed, we were gauging interest levels to find out. And also not only the interest of the students, which is Mr. Bariel has come, we had fifty students show up for, and they were all excited. Um, and, uh, but that's only, you know, we need to do a, we wanted to do a reality check before we came to the school board to say, okay. So we also had full support from parents who said, yes, this is doable. This is possible for my student. I support my kid one hundred percent in, in wanting to do this trip. And, you know, I will help out and encourage my kid and, yep, fundraising sounds good to us. And as I said, we had some, um, students and their families who said, no, we're, we can handle this on our own. We don't need fundraising. And others who said, yes.
And the three other trips to, of EF tours to Europe, um, there's been offerings of fundraising and there has been many students taking advantage of it as well.
We did have, uh, in some of the class trips, including some of the Disney trips, there were on two occasions where two students did enough fundraising, uh, to pay for their whole trip and then some spending money. Uh, it really is up to the individual student. But what I'm proud to, to say standing here today is that if there was a kid out there that really wants to go through this fundraising, these fundraising efforts, uh, every student is eligible and every student, uh, can fundraise to pay for their trip in full if they choose to hustle and do so.
We will make every op- fundraising opportunity available so that any student that really wants to go, money is not going to be the reason that they can go. Absolutely. That's the whole reason we want to do this is so that kids can get out there and travel in the world who might not be able to otherwise.
So if, um, Rhonda comes to the next school meeting with cookies to sell, we know that Rhonda's trying to go on this trip as a joke, don't we?
Or cupcakes or whatever, yes.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes. Um, no further questions? I'll entertain a vote on this.
I move that the school committee approve the trip to Costa Rica for next February vacation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Yay, thank you.
Okay.
No, 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 you're a snickety little thing.
Yep, Dr. Jan for the summer. Hey, Jan's gonna come back in a couple of minutes, so give you the opportunity to grab a cup of coffee or refreshment while Mrs. Rotella resets herself. Take a quick four-minute recess, Dr. Sylvia. Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Why is it so damn cold in here?
I agree. Freezing.
Could so, could someone answer that for me, please?
Mr. Sylvia?
It's freezing in here.
I am extremely comfortable.
I'm really cold.
It's the air exchange.
Oh. The, the intent, this was my request to keep you all wide awake at my meetings.
Wow.
It's, it's an air exchange. They exchange warm air for cold air.
Well, then can we have a quick meeting?
Okay, welcome back.
I'm not the only person that felt this.
Welcome back. Uh, I will turn it back over to Mrs. Rotella for the second report.
Right. You're going to see some overlap between some programs and four initiatives, uh, that we have established through our Race to the Top District Improvement, Race to the Top Grant and District Improvement Plan. Our Summit Programs fit into this and it is part of the philosophy of our mission of providing opportunities for all students to learn and succeed and fully understanding that some students need different periods of time and longer periods of time and different learning experiences. So with that focus on student achievement that you saw in our, uh, four initiatives, that is carried through in our summer programs. The effort is to increase learning time and small group instruction for all students who participate, to provide additional and alternative instructional strategies. Some students learn in a very traditional way. Other students need not only more time, but they need more hands-on, more experiential learning. So that through our summer programs, we are able to expand on learning in depth and also to add more exploration. We provide review, extension and enrichment. Uh, there is an increased focus on project-based learning and an increased focus on authentic, performance-based learning and assessment. There is also integrated community service learning in our summer programs. I think one of the most impressive aspects of our summer programs I've seen in my sixth and now seventh summer here is that the teachers who participate and who teach in these summer programs then bring these strategies into their classroom. And you will see, we're going to take advantage of that this summer. We have a number of programs occurring simultaneously. The Wareham High School fifth quarter is the Wareham High School Summer School that many of you know of and are quite familiar with. Two years ago, we changed the organization of the high school summer school to be a fifth quarter summer school. What that means, it is truly an extension of the school year courses. Students no longer get to do a magical full years of work in five weeks. There's no time lapse, uh, effort going on here. Rather, it is an opportunity for credit recovery for failed courses, but what happens is that the school year teachers identify the specific standards and the specific units in which the students did not perform successfully. Then the summer school teachers design project-based, standards-based lessons on those very individualized areas that students need. And the work that the students accomplish in the five weeks of the fifth quarter is averaged with the other four quarters. So as I said, it's not a magical five weeks. They don't get to be absent for forty days or not do their work for four quarters and suddenly magically pass in five weeks. Rather, everything that they did all year, they are given credit for and it builds on that in the fifth quarter so that they can be truly successful and pass the course. Then we have a program, uh, that is an extension to some extent of our fifth quarter in the mornings. These are two quarter, the fifth quarter is organized so that students are offered two courses every morning. The secondary success for all is building on our Students After School For Success Program, or SAS. Uh, we set aside a certain amount of that targeted assistance grant so that we can provide an extension of the morning summer school courses through tutoring and technology assistance. We add an online program for career goals and planning. Uh, the secondary success for all program targets are at-risk kids who are really struggling, who need support, who need encouragement that maybe they're not receiving from other areas and need counseling in how they themselves can develop their own learning strategies and build them into career goals. In fact, Mrs. Sykes, who was just here a few minutes ago, has worked in this program, uh, for the last three summers working with the students in this online program as they establish their own career goals. We're very excited this year about our Expanded Care and Care Plus program. As you know, CARE has been the after-school enrichment and remediation program that we've been offering through the Twenty First Century Learning Centers Grant. This year, we are one of four programs in the state who will be offering six weeks, six hours a day, four days a week, an Expanded Care program. The credit for receiving that grant and expanding this opportunity for our students really needs to go to Jane Fondulas. Jane has worked tirelessly for CARE. She goes to the state meetings on her own time as well as school hours. Last Saturday, she was at the Marine Center training with two other teachers for the summer program. Uh, she, and she writes the grants. We work very closely on designing these grants so that the programs are aligned with our curriculum and they extend the curriculum for depth and for experience. This year, students will have an opportunity for both academic focus on literacy, math and science, to develop their own projects, to apply those skills and concepts. And then for enrichment, the afternoon behalf of the day will include recreational opportunities. We are partnering with the Marine Science Center, with the Y, uh, with the Ocean Explorium in New Bedford, uh, to offer additional opportunities for our students to learn in different ways as well as to participate in recreational activities. Uh, all of the students through the federal grant will also be served lunch. The CARE Plus program is specifically targeting at-risk students going from eighth to ninth grade. These are students who have probably been retained more than once, are facing a transition to high school that could be a little bit of a bumpy road. So they are given intensive instruction in link, English Language Arts, Math and Science, and the study skills, how to attack those subjects in ways that maybe they have not been successful in the past. So here's another way to approach it. We have specific teachers who work with these students in small group instruction, provide tutoring, and they also receive counseling with both study skills and goal setting. Uh, and I learned today, because of some additional funds that we have received in the year, school year grant that we can extend to the summer grant, we are also going to be providing through the CARE Plus program a similarly targeted program for students coming from fifth grade going into sixth to give them that added, uh, support in study skills as they move into the middle school. Also this summer, we are again offering an elementary literacy lab, but this is a little bit different this year. It will only be four weeks, four days. It will go from the eleventh of July for four weeks. And this year, we are targeting students either currently in grade three or entering grade three in the fall. We will be, uh, posting for our third grade teachers who wish to teach in this four-week program, who have gone through the RTI training. This will be an opportunity for them to practice strategies they learned in the RTI training in tiered instruction and differentiation and to focus on writing and reading comprehension. There will be a component of oral presentation. They will be able to model lessons that they've developed with their peers in their RTI training and their peers will be invited to come in and observe this implementation of tiered instruction and differentiation. At the same time the teachers are practicing, the students will receive additional opportunities in learning and instruction in their weakest areas. Excuse me. We currently have teachers and principals in our elementary schools identifying students who could benefit from this elementary literacy lab and they will be invited to attend. Students who attend the elementary literacy lab can stay for the remainder of their day if their parents so wish and go to the afternoon care. So they would have an opportunity to participate in both. A specialized extended year, this is really Mr. Luzon's program, but I felt I didn't want to ignore it. Um, so I took the liberty of including it here and this is the extended year program for, uh, students who are identified that need specifically specialized education programs in the summer, um, for various reasons. And, uh, any other specific questions about the extended year program, I'd ask that you direct to Mr. Luzon. But that is strictly a special ed program. I do wanna say though, the Specialized Education Extended Year Program, those students will have the same opportunity to go to the afternoon care. And, uh, I didn't have a chance to tell our superintendent because I received the email at quarter of five this evening, uh, but we received an additional eleven thousand dollars for our summer Expanded Care program to specifically reach out to our students, um, in special education who need additional services, uh, for example, transportation to get from the extended year program to care. Uh, so, and the additional funds will also provide a nurse for the full-day care program. So it, that was good news received late today. Uh, the last two programs I just wanna spotlight are our summer programs that target our gifted and talented and motivated and talented students. The ASLP Advanced Studies Leadership Program is held at Mass Maritime. This is our fourth year in partnership with the Cape Cod Collaborative and Mass Maritime Academy. Uh, we have a small number of students from seventh and eighth grade who participate in this residential three-week program. three-week program. If Ms. Gillette was here this evening, she could tell you one of her daughters participated last year, and she was very enthusiastic about its focus on STEM. As our student representative mentioned earlier, this idea of encouraging students to participate, especially female students, in math, science, and engineering is a real focus of the ASLP program. So they get a chance to live at the Mass Maritime Academy, work with their instructors, and to expand their learning in math and science and engineering. PCC is an advanced studies program particularly, I know Dr. Rabinovich has shared this with you, it has moved to Stone Hill College. It is, excuse me, a partnership with southeastern Massachusetts districts. It is a residential program that lasts for five weeks, targeting talented and motivated students in grades eight and nine. The difference between ASLP and PCC is their focus. ASLP is focused on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, whereas PCC has more of a humanities, arts, science, and technology focus. All of the summer programs focus on expanding and extending students' learning opportunities. They are an opportunity for the students in our district to be involved in summer programming that is both academic, community service-oriented, and extends the learning to co-curricular activities, such as field trips, physical fitness, recreation with the Y, through the Expanded Care. Transportation is provided for all of the in-district programs for grades two through eight. Snacks and lunch are provided through the federal grant that the district receives that Ms. Miranda works with, with our cafeteria services. And all of the programs have a community service learning component. It was particularly exciting last, the last couple of years, one of our middle school teachers works with the students in the CARE program, and they literally have a garden in the courtyard of the middle school. Their garden was so prolific last year, they supplied vegetables for the local food bank for the remainder of the summer. So it's exciting what they do. The funding for these programs is almost exclusively through grants, and I would say ninety-nine point nine percent through grants. The largest of them being the Twenty-First Century Learning Centers, a federal grant. Then we are also tapping funds from our targeted assistance grants through the DSAC specifically for the Elementary Literacy Learning Lab. We have the academic support grant through the state for our high school programs. Our Title I SES tutoring is extended into the summer to finish out tutoring for those students who qualify. Obviously IDEA or ninety-four one forty-two supports the Special Education Program. And then for the high school fifth quarter, it is student tuition, and Mr. Palladino also has some local scholarship funds for students who apply. The PCC and ASLP programs are student tuition with small scholarships for selected students. Through these combined efforts, I think we have quite an array of opportunities for our students in the summer. There have been summers we've had less, summers we've had more, but the most exciting thing, I think, for this summer is the Expanded Care program. This is really offering a combination of academic extension and enrichment for our students to our parents at no cost. So it's very exciting, and we will be following the students through an expanded assessment program that we have developed in my office to track their local benchmark assessments and MCAS scores to see what kind of an impact these summer programs are having in the next school year. So this is the first year we will be able to track it ourselves. We have given up on the state data warehouse doing it for us, and we have set up our own database to do that. And I'm open to your questions, comments?
Thank you. I'll start with Dr. Sylvia. Any questions, doctor?
Just a couple, real quick. Is the summer school for the high school, the fifth quarter, I don't know if that, is that legal, Jeff, fifth quarter? Mathematically, is that possible, a fifth quarter?
Uh, no, but it's routinely a time for people to consume alcohol.
It's not mathematically correct, Dr. Sylvia.
On the fifth quarter, is that the only way in which a student at a high school can retrieve, recover credit?
I, it is the only way they can replace a failed course.
That's not my question.
The high school principal offers additional opportunities for credit recovery due to excessive absences.
Is there any control on that process?
I am working with the high school principal on that effort.
Okay. When a student takes a summer school course, are the assessments designed and evaluated by the teacher or a group of teachers? And how do we know that the minimum standard has been achieved?
I have worked with the high school principals, both the former principal and Mr. Palladino, but more importantly, I work very closely with John Flynn. Mr. Flynn is one of our high school English teachers. He runs the SASS program, the After School Success For All, and he runs, he has been both assistant director and now director of the Summer School Fifth Quarter. Mr. Flynn and I work with the teachers to develop authentic assessments using their project-based learning. So it's a cumulative project. We develop rubrics with them, and he meets with them regularly to go over those, both how they're graded and what they're grading, and if he has any concerns, he and I meet together with the teacher. So we're, he, I have to really say, none of these programs would be successful without our teachers and our, most importantly, our teacher leaders, and Mr. Flynn is one of them.
Right. I just don't want it to be seat time. I don't want-
Absolutely not.
I don't want kids being able to get their credit, or more importantly, to increase their skill level, or assume that their skill level, skill level's been increased just by seat time. I think they're just, they've got to, there's got to be an air of accountability for the kids, at summer school particularly. Now, on the other part of this, has any of this been a kind of like, I don't know how to put this and be politically correct, a mandated but not yet mandated transitional program for grade five and eight?
Yes, they are. They are, the five, the eighth grade program in particular, Mr. Gilmore has been incredibly consistent and very supportive in, he gives us an early identification, both Ms. Fondulas and myself meet with him, as to the students who cannot go to the high school if they don't attend this transition program. And for those targeted eighth graders, they have to attend both the morning program in academics and the afternoon Secondary Success For All. And if they don't attend, he keeps them back in the eighth grade, or they transfer to the cooperative.
How about similarly, grade five?
Grade five, this is only the second year we've done this transition program. Ms. Siemens and I worked together last year, she's worked closely with Ms. Fondulas, to encourage fifth-grade parents to send their students to this program. I will be also working with Mrs. Panerisi this year. I know she's already met with Ms. Fondulas. It is more difficult to enforce at that age level, and we try to be a little more tolerant. But I would say, in all ways possible, we are encouraging parents strongly to have those at-risk fifth graders participate.
Thank you. Miranda?
Thank you. I think throughout the presentation, I kept wanting to ask the question about participation or enrollment in last year. Is there any way we can get those statistics in each one of these programs if they were available last year, just what the participation was?
Without a doubt. I believe usually early in the fall, when I do an overview of how many students participated and give a paper or an oral report. We have, on average, every year in the CARE program, about a hundred to a hundred and fifty students participate. In order to qualify for this Expanded Care grant, we had to have assurance from two-hundred-and-fifty students that they would participate, or a hundred more than previous years. So we have that assurance. In the elementary literacy lab, we've averaged forty to sixty students in previous years. The high school fifth quarter is usually approximately a hundred students, it could be as high as a hundred and fifty. But I will definitely get you specific numbers from previous years.
Thank you. My second question is through you, Mr. Charador, student representative. Jess, for the program specifically around secondary success for all, as well as ACLP and PCC, are, well, besides those, for the secondary success for all, do high school students see it as an opportunity for prep or another chance at getting ahead or additional learning, or are they seeing those kinds of programs as just, it's summer school?
I'm sure many do see it as just another summer school type of course, but you're always going to have those students who strive to educate themselves, who want to take the extra courses, to take the more rigorous course load, who will seek out these alternative routes. So while if you look at the overwhelming amount of students, ha, I would say, your split between those types of people, those who, I just want to sleep until 1:00 PM in the afternoon and then go hang out with my friends for the evening, and then do it again for the rest of the summer, compared to those who will take these types of courses, will do the PCC, will maybe do the dual enrollment during the summer, who will find those avenues for themselves to make better choices, compared to just doing the average student things, I guess you'd say.
And I'm glad to hear that, because I didn't know if there was even a percentage that thought that way, that it, so, I mean, I think that speaks a lot to the program, that the way the program is set up, that students do see it as a way to prepare for the following year or to get ahead. So thank you. I had one more question. The ACLP and the PCC, again, to get participation from last year would be great, and then are there, how are you promoting those programs, besides just sending it out to the parents and send, but, I mean, again, I keep going back to that encouragement.
Right.
How are we encouraging our kids to get involved in those programs?
The guidance counselor at the middle school is the individual who is responsible for doing that. I know that he meets with students, he contacts parents. Can that information be expanded? We can always do more for communication, absolutely. But it is handled through the middle school guidance counselor. I know that the middle school principal will also highlight it in his school council meetings and with PTO, PTA meetings. But it is wholly handled through the, through the middle school.
And I know, because we brought this up before, that, just an idea, maybe we could do it in a way that, that it's, it's a congratulatory letter that is sent home saying, "Your child," and based on their-
We, yes, we do do that.
Okay.
Yes.
That they are eligible for these programs.
Oh, highly abusive congratulatory letter. I've been in a district, we have never done it here, but I think it's something to consider is in the spring, in the early spring, is almost have an expo and invite parents and students to see what's available for the summer. And that's something we've talked about. The problem is we're so depend-
Kind of like a career fair in a way.
Pardon?
Like a career fair in a way.
Exactly, only summer school. The problem is we're so dependent on grant funds, and we don't know what we're going to be able to offer till we get the grants. So that's what keeps us in this sort of limbo sometimes, and not knowing until the last minute what we're going to have and what we're going to be able to offer.
What's nice is that you could plan it as a recurring annual event, but not decide on the programs until the very end. But, so then it's just that people get used to the idea that it is going to be something that's got every single year. Thank you. Very much.
Jessica, you wanted to respond to?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the question of informing the students on the PCC aspect of it. I remember specifically when I was in ninth grade, that the guidance counselors went out to all the different English classes, and they spent a whole period discussing what PCC is and how if they didn't remember what it was or weren't active in it from the previous year, it went over all that. It went over scholarship information, and I remember sitting through that and having the people around me become interested in it. So I think that is another way that it has been suggested to the students.
Great, thank you. Thank you. That's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Did I hear you correctly say that for kids that don't want to participate in the summer school, that they would be told that they would be either retained or sent to the junior senior cooperative? Is that really what you meant to say?
The eighth-grade students who are identified for the intensive program for CARE Plus really are, have the opportunity to gain the skills they're lacking to move on to high school. If they choose not to participate, then there are only two options, and that is retention, or if they meet other criteria, look at a potential transfer to the cooperative school rather than retention. We are talking about students who are in serious need because of learning gaps.
But isn't it true that the junior senior cooperative school is voluntary?
Yes, it is voluntary.
It's a choice.
It is, it is their choice, and their choice can be to be retained in eighth grade at the middle school, if they do not participate.
For those, moving on, the, for those programs that you've outlined-
Yes.
Where we're organizationally responsible, meaning obviously not ASLP and PCC.
Right.
Could you just, how many teachers are involved in how many buildings?
There are basically three buildings involved, the high school, the middle school, and this year, mine it, where the Extended Year Specialized Education Program will be. The middle school is most definitely involved, and to the greatest extent, because that is where the Expanded Care program is, the Elementary Literacy Lab, CARE Plus. And so those programs and Secondary Success For All crosses the high school and the middle school. So those are the three programs, the three schools predominantly involved, and most extensively, the middle school.
And how many teachers?
How many teachers? It is difficult for me to estimate at this point because we don't have all the registrations in. But I would say, on the average, in previous years, we've had upwards of fifty to sixty teachers employed.
Okay, so fifty to sixty teachers, three buildings. And what is the-
And that's probably low on teachers, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I'm probably low on the teacher number.
And what is the organizational structure of that with respect to supervision?
In, there is a project coordinator for each program, each one of the programs. For the Specialized Education Extended Year, there's a project coordinator who works directly with Stacy Rogers and Mr. Luzon. The project coordinators in each of the other programs, I work directly with them. They are directly responsible for supervising teachers and faculty. And some of the larger programs, such as the High School Fifth Quarter and the Expanded Care, they also have assistant coordinators. I meet with the coordinators regularly, visit the programs, but they are directly involved and responsible for the supervision of the teachers.
So if there are fifty to sixty, and you say that may be low, so let's say sixty, how many of these supervisory positions would you say there are, approximately?
There's one for every program, not including assistants. So I would say there are, if I include assistants, there are six to eight, upwards of ten project coordinators and assistants.
Sounds like plenty of supervision. And they, and they know they are the supervisors, and they have the responsibility for making sure that what we want to take place in the classroom is in fact taking place in the classroom.
Absolutely. For example, Ms. Fondulas- Absolutely. For example, Ms. Fondulis will be there, um, the minute buses leave transportation. She's on the radio to hear about any concerns with transportation or busing. She continues on that radio an hour after the end of the program. Um, so that she manages and supervises the teachers as well as the entire program. And I have to say, for each of our project coordinators, they have never hesitated to call when they needed help. Um, and we have, you know, a wonderful group of directors and superintendents so that if one of us is on vacation, somebody else is available. Uh, to take those calls. And, you know, I know that if there's an issue with lunch, they won't hesitate to call Ms. Miranda if there's an issue anywhere. But they definitely take responsibility, yes.
Although it's, I'm not suggesting it's unimportant, but I'm less concerned with buses and, and lunches than I am with academics. So is there, is there a, an actual evaluation that takes place of a teacher during this period of time?
There is not an actual evaluation that takes place. There are observations that take place. Both the project coordinators and I walk through the classrooms, uh, and closely monitor what is occurring. Uh, each of the courses that is, that are offered, whether it's in Care, Care Plus, or the fifth quarter. The teachers are given, uh, uh, an outline of what the curriculum needs to be. What the curriculum is expected to accomplish, what those goals are. And teachers submit, for example, in the fifth quarter, they submit their curriculum plans to the fifth quarter director, to Mr. Flynn. So we are monitoring what is taught and how it's taught throughout the summer.
If, if based on observations, walkthroughs, et cetera, there was concern, um, I assume as a minimum, you simply wouldn't invite that teacher to. To be a part of it the next summer. Is that a?
It is.
Is that the, at least the discretion that you have?
Absolutely. And the project coordinator, um, in each of these programs, for the programs under my supervision, I meet with them. Uh, they conduct the interviews for hiring the teachers. And then if they have any questions or concerns, they may ask me to sit in on the interview. We try to follow good due process. So if there's a situation where they're concerned about a teacher in a particular classroom. And either there has been an incident or there's a potential of something that is not right, they've asked me to come in and observe. Or they will meet with the teacher directly. Uh, but they definitely know they're responsible. And I think one of the other things that's part of this dual edged sword of depending on grants. Is that all of these programs, because of the grant funding, require end of the program reporting. Very specific program reporting back to the state that includes achievement and curriculum reporting. So I meet with each of these coordinators, not only during the program, but afterwards, as they reflect and assess what happened and complete those reports for the state.
Thank you.
Jan, how would you rate the success of, of the program? And that's just because, uh, Dr. Sylvia's comment, um, hopefully it's not just the seat. How many kids benefit from this and are there some that, uh, it's still a, a problem?
Um, I think it's program specific. I would have to say, for the high school fifth quarter, this was a huge change. Um, in perspective for both our school year teachers and our summer school teachers. They were used to the magic five weeks, and I don't know how else to describe it except the magic five weeks. So when we introduced this concept of a fifth quarter, which quite honestly I've seen, had seen very successfully implemented in other districts. We had to sell our teachers that it is right to give students credit for what they did do or did not do during the school year. And build on that cumulatively. Uh, and since that has been implemented, the response we've received from teachers. It has been overwhelmingly positive. They said suddenly the students realize they've got to do work during the school year in order for the math to work. That they'll come up with a passing grade. And that they're seeing the students coming back the next school year with a different attitude. Um, because of this kind of focused, uh, attention to what they did not do. So we've seen positive, uh, from the secondary success for all and the targeted intensive programs. I would have to say it's been nearly a hundred percent positive in the change that we've seen in students. The care program, we probably have the least conclusive results because in the past, it's been such a mix of enrichment and academics. So I'm looking forward to the results this year to see.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And you're all welcome to visit. Uh, there will be a care fair at the end of the summer. So, uh, Dr. Rabinevich will have the date and time to share with you, so I hope you all can come and visit.
Okay. Report of the chair, very brief, uh, nothing major in my report other than, uh, Dr. Sylvia and I will. Report out on the national school board at the next, uh, meeting. It was going to be on the agenda tonight. But due to the length of our agenda, uh, we'll talk about that at our next meeting. And also at the next meeting, I'll ask for an update if any of the committee members have reached out to, uh, the members of the board of selectmen. Uh, any general conversation, just to see how things are going. Dr. Rabinevich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just two items to talk about in my report. Uh, the first one is approximately, um, two weeks ago, I received an email from Mr. Tetrow. Um, telling me that it was becoming, uh, more difficult and more expensive. To keep some of our older vehicles in the shape necessary to, uh, pass inspection. And he was thinking that we needed to take action sooner rather than later. Um, I happened to be away when I got that email. I emailed, um, Mrs. Miranda who, um, reached out to, um. Alan Slaven from Capital Planning, um, Mr. Andrews, the town administrator, um, Mr. Heath from Finance Board. Um, members of the school board, Rhonda was able to come to the meeting as well as the chairman, Mr. Fauntz. And, um, we met, um, a week ago Wednesday, I believe, in my office. And, um, we talked about, uh, what had changed. Uh, there was an open discussion about, uh, the needs. Um, we asked Mr. Slaven particularly about his comment at town meeting report. About, um, thinking that perhaps we should go out to, um, bid for the general. Um, he explained that he was looking at a three year average of the fleet. And when we then discussed, um, that that wasn't realistic, that a five year was much more realistic. That he agreed that it was in fact cheaper, um, for us to do it internally. And that, um, by the end of the meeting, we had agreed that we needed to take action. That we would do some homework about a leasing company that would be open to do a lease on, um, buses. Twenty large seventy-seven passenger, uh, buses, as well as twelve special needs vehicles. Um, and the two ambulances that the town needs, um, and maybe police cruises as well. And try to bundle this together, um, that we would put out an R F I. And, um, that each person on the committee would go back to their own, um, separate committees, report back to them. We would hope to get together in approximately two weeks when we had some data. And, uh, then we would ask the town moderator to put together a special town meeting for July. In order to go to the town member meet, um, the voters of Wareham, to ask them to approve, um, funds to do this lease. When the question was asked about where the funds came, Mr. Andrews talked a little bit about, um, having room in, under debt. Which I, to be honest, I don't have that information. Uh, and perhaps after our next meeting, I'll have a better handle on exactly, um, what he means on that. But, um, everybody agreed that if we were gonna go out either to bond or to lease. That because of the rates being approximately three percent right now, um, it was better to do it now rather than to wait. Because, um, according to some members of the group, there were indicators that, um, rates may be rising. And I don't have any, uh, particular knowledge on that. So that was, um, on that particular one. Do we want to take any questions on that item before we move ahead? And just for the general public, I did send to the town administrator, to, um, FinCom and to the Capital Planning Committee. My understanding of what we walked away with at that meeting, and I used the word reached consensus. And Mr. Slaven answered me back saying that was his understanding as well. Mr. Chairman, are you?
Yes. I, uh, I applaud the work that you and, uh, everybody else at that meeting, uh, did. It sound, reaching a consensus on this issue, I think, is an important step. Having said that, I think it is doing a disservice to the taxpayers and citizens of Wareham. To, for them to think that a three year lease, um, is a solution to this problem. It kicks the can down the road. We'll, at the end of three years, we'll have a huge problem. Um, and frankly, at the end of three years, the cost of money, I agree, is likely to be higher. Of course, if we all knew which way the cost of money was going, we, we would be, you know, buying villas on the southern France. Nevertheless, I think it's reasonable to assume they can't stay at zero forever. So it seems to me that the only honest thing to do is to present the problem. And to say, "The most cost effective solution is a debt exclusion for the capital costs that this town has." Which obviously includes more than just buses. It includes ambulances and perhaps other things as well. Um, and I would, I would, if, if it's necessary to have a special town meeting to do that, certainly, uh, I'm all for it. It's too bad we can't take the opportunity, uh, you know, on May twenty-fifth?
Sixth.
The Monday when we're continuing town meeting, uh, for that time because the special town meeting will, will cost some money.
I was told that it was too late to put anything on that agenda.
Well, yeah, but capital, well, I'll, if that's the case, that's the case. Uh, but I just, I just hope there's a premium put on honesty with, uh, with respect to the taxpayers. Because I think they, I think they deserve it.
Absolutely. Okay, and, um, the second item is that I attended, um, and this kind of goes along with, um, a couple of school board members. And Jan and I and, um, um, high school principal working, um, talking about, um, pilots involving, um, iPads. And so I attended a day and a half seminar put on by Apple, um, at the Weston in Boston. And, um, the full court press of sales was unveiled. And, um, it was exciting. There were, um, um, a lot of superintendents from other school systems that are involved. Um, and I was able to get some information from some other districts. We saw it throughout the country, how it's, um, used differently in different places. And, um, I saw Apple's vision of, um, iPods in elementary and, um, iPads in, uh, middle. And, uh, laptops in high school. And, um, so I am meeting with, um, our salesperson. Um, Mr. Cohen will be Friday afternoon, um, to make sure that he understands our requirements for. Having ready a number of requisitions, um, bids, so to speak. So that, um, at the end of, uh, the fiscal year, um, with the director of operations, if we're able to, um, locate some finances. We'll be able to, um, pull the trigger on, uh, getting these projects up and running, which we hope to be able to do.
Um, okay, before we continue, uh, I'll need a motion to go past ten because we will be going into executive session after.
So move.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, did you have a question, Rhonda, earlier?
Jeff had a question.
Jeff answered it. I had a question.
I do have a.
Go ahead.
Well, it's more common. Um, as the committee knows, you know, Rhonda and I are very supportive of this, um, effort to, to, to bring some enhanced technology. But I, uh, and I'm sure I should probably speak for the superintendent as well. But I think in this particular case, it absolutely pays to be on the cutting edge, not the bleeding edge. I think a little caution, uh, with respect to how we spend the money is appropriate. I think the pilots that we're doing are just fine and going beyond the pilots should be based on the data that we collect. In terms of the effectiveness of these tools to better engage students, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, I, just, just a word of caution, but I suspect I'm preaching to the choir.
We're going in with our eyes wide open.
Uh, one second, Rhonda. Did you have a?
Yeah, the only thing that I would say is that, you know, I, I agree that, um, that before we just go out and purchase. There's a lot of work that needs to be done behind the scenes to make sure that, um, Wareham is in the, um, right, um, mind frame to do that. Especially with all the, um, things that, um, that we're trying to achieve, um, over the next year. Um, but I think that, and Dr. Rabinevich, you and I talked about this before, I think that what can start right now. And I think what I'm looking for is, um, at least something down on paper around a project plan about what we think our, our timeline is. Uh, or our initial goal is when it comes to this rollout and, and the steps that would go into a rollout. Um, because I know that, that we're thinking about doing a training. Um, we do have two iPads that could be used with, um, some of the teachers today. But to, just to get down on paper, because we can move the timelines, but the general steps that would go into an official rollout, if we could.
We actually have that. And if we haven't shared it, it may be because we've been waiting for, um, Apple to be a little more, um, concrete with us. About when we can expect the devices, um, that people need to be trained on. Two is not gonna do it for us at this time.
Absolutely. Um, and I'm even going beyond, when I think of a project plan of rollout of something like this, it's even beyond the getting the devices in and getting trained on the devices. It's, it's everything that goes into, um, you know, we talked about a little bit about curriculum and, um, and just. Those are the types of things that, um, if, if there is a project plan that includes all of those. It would be great to maybe reconvene the group that, uh, was first talking about this or, let me just say, any other next meeting. I'd love to be part of that, just to be able to take a look at it. Um, just.
We'll, we'll schedule it when we have it ready for you.
Thanks so much.
Ted?
And that was what I was going to add, is that we have a draft plan. We've met with Apple. It's, it is multifaceted. It does include the curriculum. Um, but how fast this is happening as far as its wide ranging effects is almost overwhelming. I met with a representative from one of the major publishing companies yesterday looking at our math needs at the middle school. And the first thing he said to me when we walked in the door is, "Jan, I gotta tell you, the math textbooks I'm showing you are all available online." So, and it wasn't four months ago that we had contacted the same company and they were not available online. So things are changing very quickly. So that, of course, has to be worked into the equation as well.
Yeah. And, and where I'm, and I, I, that's great. And I'm glad that a plan is there. I just, I keep going back to in the buildings, the project plan, you know, the, the steps that when you're in the building, you're working with the teachers and the students and all of that. Making sure that we at least have a, a, um, a good understanding today, what each one of those steps are. What does that look like? And make sure that we're getting in all different opinions to make sure that we're not missing, um, anything at least for right now.
We've met with the technology coordinator, we continue to meet with the principals. Absolutely, it has to be all parties involved.
Yep, including parents.
Thanks, Jeff, did you have one?
Just, just two quick other thoughts. One is if someone could give us the status of the infrastructure improvements that we plan to make over the summer. And the second point is more a comment, and that is the one mistake I think we could make that would be really unfortunate, and I'm not suggesting we're going in that direction, but I'm saying it's easy to slip into that, is to think of the iPads as just fancy e-readers. Because my reading of what some schools are doing is that's essentially what they're doing. They-
No, it's got to go beyond.
It's got to go well beyond that in order to justify the expense and the effort associated with it. Now, I know we have wonderful teachers like Lynn Sykes and John Wilson and perhaps others who I haven't met yet who want to go beyond that. But that's what has to happen in order to justify the expense because the last thing I'd want is a parent to say, "You haven't got any money and you're just buying fancy e-readers, you know, books are good enough." And we have to be able to say, "If it was just an e-reader, you'd be a hundred percent right, but we're doing a whole lot more and the impact should be a lot greater and the engagement of students and the learning, et cetera, et cetera." So, enough said, I guess once again, I'm preaching to the choir.
Thanks.
Oh, but I did want an answer to the infrastructure question.
In the infrastructure question, I will, at the next meeting, have for you the report. I got one today, an update of where we are in the process.
Great, thank you.
Any other business, Rhonda?
No.
Dr. Sylvia? Jeff?
I'll say.
Just one, we did receive a, a, a letter addressed to the school committee and the superintendent about issues at the cooperative school. I just want to comment on it so that the people that sent it. Before we address anything, these requests need to have signatures on it. It just represents, mentions three groups. So, to the potties that sent the letter, I will say that Dr. Rabinevich, more than likely, will have a conversation with the principal at the co-op. But feel free to come up and citizen public participation or if it's a letter signed by the people that claim that they were on this letter, then we'd be more than happy to address it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if they'd like to make an appointment with the superintendent, I'd be happy to sit with them and listen to their concerns. And then when there is a face behind with a signature, it is much more realistic than an anonymous letter of complaint.
Okay, thanks. Next, I'll poll the committee to go into executive session for contract discussion.
Yes.
An executive session minutes for December eighth and December fifteenth. Correct, Rhonda?
Yes.
Dr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. We will be going into executive session. We will come out of executive session solely for the purpose of adjournment. I'd like to thank everybody and we'll see you at our next meeting.